You passed away.
And then can we, Quentin, so this office too, I see already a lot of references. Okay, thank you. Uh, this Livingston City Commission meeting on September nineteenth is called to order. Roll call, please.
Chair Newt's.
Here.
Vice Chair Kim.
Here.
Commissioner Friedman.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
I've won.
Thank you. First up on the agenda is general public comment. Individuals are reminded that public comments should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, controls jurisdiction, or advisory power. So this is the time of the meeting. If you have general public comment for items not on the agenda, you can come up to the podium and start with your name and address, and we'll give you four minutes. Is there anybody here with general public comment? Welcome.
Hello.
Hi, can you just start with your name and address, please, and sign in?
Um, Jesse Kula, address two nineteen Gardner Avenue, seven twenty-one.
Thank you.
All right, yet again, I'm going for the uh, city code regarding food trucks. Um, it's like seventeen dash four. Uh, told the Livingston enterprise that if there was interest, it would be under review. I don't know, okay, okay.
Yeah, you can pass it to the end and they'll pass it down.
Oh, from this is really what happens now. Seventy-one percent of the community, five hundred people voted seventy-one said, um, they'd like to see food trucks just have free rein. Another twenty-one percent said they'd like to see some regulations, but yours are far too strict. That's ninety-one percent of just a random poll throughout Livingston. Realize it's not official, didn't go door to door. But at the end of the day, it wouldn't help if I did go door to door because it's not on the agenda and therefore, you know, it's not up for discussion, but um, it, it does have some weight to it. And uh, the four hour thing's just far too strict. Say you have a fryer in your truck. By the time it heats up, you serve a couple, then it has to cool down so you can drain it, so you can move it. Or what, you just drive around with the crazy sloshing all over the place? Like this isn't, it's not realistic. I realize that you're trying to protect the border, morder and brick bit businesses in downtown here, but there isn't a truck in town that is competing with any business downtown. I mean, the hot dog guy behind now, if you were to eat at, um, I don't know, the Stockman, you wouldn't stop and just grab a hot dog. It's not, they're not in conflict. The, the closest would be Berry Bowls and Jason Mayfield Smoothie Place. And Jason started in a food truck. That's where mine came from was, it was originally his truck. And the only way to upgrade in life is you gotta start somewhere. I started out homeless, going to school here in Livingston. And I now own not a great house, but I have a house and a food truck. And also want to do is serve food to the population. That is it. Just simple. I cashed in my retirement. This is all I have. Please let me just open like without changing locations every four hours. Um, yeah, I don't know. We have a interview with Fox News tomorrow at eight thirty, so I'd like to hear, you know, from you guys. Um, as well as there be interviewing some businesses and some other food trucks and yeah, it'll be a great time, I guess. I don't know. So I have.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
I'll just offer that you're not the first person who has an interest in food trucks, and we, the commission, have been encouraging folks to get involved with the downtown master plan project. I believe there's a opportunity specifically around food trucks to engage. Is that right, Mr. Gager?
I believe in mid-November, approximately November sixteenth.
Excellent. So I'd encourage you to stay tuned and participate in that process. It's going to be a really robust public process to create that master plan, and it's a process that we've talked about at previous meeting, and we like folks to engage with. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
So anyone else that would like to offer general public comment? All the online, is there anyone online? I see Leslie Feigl. Can you just start with your name and address, please, Leslie?
Yes, hi, this is Leslie Feigl and three oh three East Park Street, the um, Chamber of Commerce. Um, I guess I, you guys can't see me, so the um, there was something I wanted to bring up. Um, I'm sure you're aware of Bozeman's um, in Bozeman, there are um, quite a few issues that have been happening around the street camping. Um, whether it is homelessness or they're choosing the free lifestyle of the campers. Um, Bozeman has been dealing with quite a few um, problems over the so many months this year. And the problem is that today, as we're speaking now, Bozeman's um, the, the city is also meeting to discuss on what they're going to be doing, and they're looking at a five day rotation. Now, the reason why I'm bringing this up about Bozeman is that if we don't figure out a way within the city to put something on the books, we don't currently have an ordinance. We do have, you can't park your vehicle for um, so many days on the street, but we know that, that, you know, it takes a very long time to get any of those vehicles towed, and they have to be um, un-driveable. And if they are not licensed or they're not registered, you, you know, and so on. But I think that if you see a foresee a future coming of if they start to kick them out of Bozeman, they're gonna come over the hill and they're gonna find some places here to park. We need to take a look at the future and get something on our books. Um, and I'm asking the commission at this time to take this very serious. The crime in Bozeman between the rapes and the thefts and the drugs that are surrounding these camper um, uh, communities, uh, I guess is almost what you can call them. They it, it, I can't even imagine that happening here, but we're thirty-two minutes away, and if they kick down, get kicked out of there, they're gonna come here. And, you know, I just think that would be an opportunity for us to start looking at this sooner uh, than later. Um, and I did talk with the uh, county commissioners this morning again, as well um, as the sheriff's department in these regards, and we simply need to find a way to get something on the books before it happens here. We've already got people living in basements. We've got migrants. Uh, we've, we've got a lot of things that are already going on, so we need to um, be proactive. And I appreciate your time and listening to me today. Thank you.
You, Leslie. Is there anyone else online that would like to give general public comment? I'll do one more call in the room. I see Patricia standing up. Patricia, do you want to comment up?
I wasn't gonna make a public comment, but I am. Patricia Gray vote two oh four East Calendary Street. Let's all make one comment about homelessness. Um, the thing that is kept out of out of uh, the discussion on homelessness is the trauma that the people who are homeless are going through. Having been a single parent and sometimes desperate financial situations and so forth. The ideal situation I've talked with with Jennifer Magic, who is the city commissioner over in Bozeman about this is that the healing thing that occurs is neighborhoods. It doesn't occur healing or helping people homeless by having them put in this eight million dollar facility so that they're they're sheltered. That is not what is occurring for homeless people. What is occurring is all kinds of difficulty and and vulnerability of people who are in that situation. So if, if in fact Livingston takes a look at any kind of homeless situation, Livingston has to realize it has to be small numbers in neighborhoods. It cannot be large HRDC, whatever. It needs to be the healing that occurs when someone is homeless says hi to their neighbor. It's really important. So one acre and plots with housing for homeless people or places for people to stay or even small trailer parks are a possibility. But it's just my comment that having dealt with that in my own life. I, I know that large, anything simply does not work. So, and even things like the Sherwood doesn't work because it is too large. So I just want to make that comment. And, and the hope is that we don't just shelter people. We're mortal, we die. And in this process of life itself, we, we enrich their lives. That's what our, our real goal and objective is. Since I'm making that comment, if we do anything, I'd like to be involved, and I'd like us to take a human look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Is there anyone else in the room or online that would like to offer a comment? Ashia Mills. Can you just come off mute and start with your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Ashia Mills and my address seven twenty North D Street. Livingston, and um, thanks for taking the time to take public comment. I just wanted to chime in, and it felt like a good time after Patricia's comments. Um, there was an event a couple nights ago downtown in Main Street, and I really give uh, huge kudos to the commission and Main Street businesses um, and all the organizers for Livingston, as they called it. Um, I, I didn't really know what it was about when I first heard about it, and I did end up going, and it was such a fun evening, and it was such a wonderful community event. It was just full of friends I hadn't seen and laughing and love, and um, it was just really, it really felt good to be a part of Livingston. Um, and some of you know the Facebook page, um, this is really Livingston, which can go sideways pretty quickly. Um, and I think there have been probably some comments removed, but I did want to say that there's, I, it's the most comments I think I've ever seen, or not comments, but reactions of likes and loves. There's like almost seven hundred of them on there. So um, it was great to see community leaders and teachers and teeny tiny little babies and elderly folks and just, you know, an, an amazing cross-section of our community. Um, and so um, I, as a, a few, a few days prior to that, I did the walkabout with um, Jennifer Magic and Jennifer from the planning office um, with the city and um, PCEC and some other folks that were joining to kind of talk about the neighborhood plan. And it reminded me that as much as we can support those kinds of events, it was so much fun just to have the whole block to hang out in, and it was very safe. Um, and it just felt really good. So kudos to everybody involved, and um, thanks for the support of those kinds of events.
Thank you, Ashia. Is there anybody else online or in the room that would like to offer general public comment? Not seen any. Uh, general public comment is now closed. Next on the agenda, we have five consent items. Uh, we're good with all five. That's correct. Uh, so do I have a motion for A through E or any that the commission would like hold for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve content items A through E.
Second.
Motion by Kale and a second by Lyons. All in favor, say aye.
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 We have five zero. Motion passes. Next up is a proclamation. Let me turn to the page. We have a proclamation of the city commission of the city of Livingston declaring September nineteenth as information technology professionals stay in Livingston. Whereas national information technology professional stay is celebrated on the third Tuesday of every September in recognition and appreciation of IT professionals who take care of the critical technology infrastructure that is, that is relied on to power our digital experience. And whereas IT professionals play a critical role in managing and maintaining the essential system and applications that allow the city to serve its residents with excellent services. And whereas the city of Livingston IT services includes cybersecurity preparedness, telecommunications, geographic information systems, network infrastructure, server and desktop virtualization, application and systems development, and twenty-four seven on-call support for public safety and other mission-critical applications. And whereas two IT professionals across our organization currently provide these services to our residents and our employees, and every day these IT professionals are called upon to overcome a myriad of new challenges and a rapidly changing environment. And whereas the city of Livingston has been improved by the results of dedicated efforts by our IT professionals as they have increased efficiency, protected city assets, and improved the safety of our residents and employees. Now therefore, therefore be it resolved on behalf of the City Livingston City Commission, I am Melissa Newt's chair, do hereby declare September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three to be information technology professional stay in Livingston, Montana. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Newt's, and I will note that our two uh, full-time IT professionals, Erica and Liz, are home getting the rest because I've been busy lately. So uh, thank you, Erica and Liz.
Commissioners, is there anything that folks want to add to this conversation about our IT professionals? Well, I will chime in and say that I have been very grateful for their help. Um, I know that they've been very supportive of the commission throughout the years since we've been in and out of in-person and virtual meetings and requiring their help to make sure the city can keep moving forward, making decisions. Quentin, anything you want to add? Nope, he's good. Okay. Next up on the agenda is a scheduled public hearing. Individuals are reminded that testimony in a public hearing should be relevant material and not repetitious. So we have consideration of community development block grant projects for twenty twenty-three.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Newt's. This item is uh, we are revisiting from a month ago in August, when we did the first some public hearing for a, a call for projects for community development grant, block grants in twenty twenty-three. There is a um, a, a cycle that uh, applications are due November one, and again, there are both planning and construction grants. Um, and, and so uh, again, following Montana Department of Commerce best practice, this is the second public hearing to call for projects, and we, we heard last time from uh, community members with uh, with Neighbor Works Montana um, related to a construction grant um, at the View Vista um, well, our facility, development facility, mobile home facility. And so uh, again, this is following Department of Commerce best practice to, to hold a second public hearing and uh, solicit ideas as the city works to finalize applications again for both planning and development or construction grants of the CDP program. So um, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Is there anything you're looking for from us? We don't have enough.
I recognize that that staff report's got dropped from the pack.
Not one of us noticed prior to the meeting.
Right now. Yeah. No, you know, we uh, we, we did this, you may recall, two meetings ago.
Right.
And um, no, the, the only item here really is to uh, open a, a public hearing and um, solicit public comments on, on possible community development block grant um, projects. And, and again, we heard from uh, Neighbor Works about a uh, uh, of water and sewer, uh, water wastewater project at, at View Vista. Um, they would like to pursue a, a construction grant for, and I will say internally, um, you know, we mentioned it in the last meeting, related to the uh, zoning code overhaul, the, the city does um, expect to, to likely pursue a be planning grants um, with the Department of Commerce to help support that zoning overhaul process.
So do you need a motion, or can I just open the public hearing for comment and then close it after?
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Do you have any clarifying questions, commissioners, before we? Okay. All right. So this public hearing to consider for the consideration of community development block grant projects for twenty twenty-three is now open. So folks that want to give comment, I'll start in the room. Um, or is there anybody in the room that wants to offer comment on these grants? Not seen any. So I'll go online. I see Danielle. Would you like to start us off, Danielle, with your name and address who you're representing?
Good evening, commissioners. This is Danielle Maiden. I am the Cooperative Housing Director for Neighbor Works Montana. My address is two zero two Fox Hill Drive in Kalispell, Montana. I do want to clarify, the application for the CDBG Public Works is on October fourth, so a little quicker than November first, unfortunately. Um, but we do want to propose a grant for the View Vista Community um, application to go forth to CDBG for Public Works at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This would be part of a much larger project um, that includes replacing the entire water and sewer system at the community. We have also been having discussions with the DNRC about other grant resources for the community and a possible SRF loan to be able to pay for that. They have quite a bit of need there. Their lift station has failed. They have quite a few sewer lines that have completely failed, and they have multiple water leaks at the community with a pretty substantial water bill um, at the city. And so this really is a extreme high priority for us to get through. And then John Gass, the engineer who completed the project, uh, the PCR for them, and the PER or I guess it is just the PER, the preliminary engineering report he completed. He is on the line to just give a little bit more detail on the project if there are any questions.
Thank you, Danielle. Is there anyone else online that would like to give comment? John, would you like to go next?
Yeah, thank you. Um, John Gass with WGM Group, um, eleven eleven East Broadway, Missoula. I'm gonna be brief and, and uh, because I don't know if my voice will hold out much longer. Um, but just kind of wanted to echo Danielle's statement. We've uh, prepared a preliminary engineering report uh, last year, working with the city and the View Vista community and reviewed the sewer and water systems out there. Um, just from a, from an engineering point, from a, from a public health and safety point, this is a um, you know, much-needed project and is right in line with the goals and objectives of the CDBG program. So appreciate your support for this project.
Thanks, John. Is there anyone else that would like to offer a public comment? I'm gonna scan the. Oh, I see somebody with the two two three seventy-one seventeen number. Can you start with your name and address, please?
Of course. My name is Jan Buckner. I live at One View Vista Drive, apartment A two. I've lived here, it'll be fifteen years in October. And I just want to say, going way back to the public comment earlier in the meeting, that residential fragility is a real thing in Park County. I have a decent job with the county, and I still am constantly concerned about being able to afford where I live. And the apartments at View Vista Village, while they, the rent does go up, they are affordable. And I have, I have been able to have my two cats in my apartment the whole time that I've lived here. Our water's getting turned off quite often because of the water leaks. I know that the county tried to get a grant, and now I appreciate that the city is working on trying to get a grant. And I just want to say that I really appreciate what the city is trying to do and what Neighbor Works is trying to do to improve and maintain our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jan. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment? Hi, Patricia.
Patricia Gray vote two oh four East Calendar. I wanted to, um, and I've said before that I really love this idea uh, that Neighbor Works Montana is doing. And um, there was an article in the newspaper that um, talked about our city manager, the possibility of tiny houses um, in smaller spaces around the city, and I think it came out a significant number of houses that we could have. We have a tiny house manufacturing company, so it, it's a win-win situation all the way around. I really, I don't know how much we have in CDBG for grants. I think it comes up to seven million dollars per grant. So it's something that would be doable for us, and I really like Neighborhood, Neighbor Works, Montana as a implementer of this. So I just wanted to endorse as a citizen, that idea of really having a number of significant number of tiny houses in Livingston, Montana. I think it puts us on the map as um, uh, inventive and and, yeah, and actually practical in what we, we had ended up doing. I want to make one other comment. I'm the granddaughter of Montana pioneers on both sides of my family. And my grandfather on my mother's side of the family was in Bridger, Montana, built the first building eighteen ninety-two, and kicked Bill Cody out of that place a couple times, and planted Jade babysat the children on his first marriage, I'm the product of his third marriage. At any rate, one of his neighbors at that time couldn't find a place to live, so they moved into a cave. And they had four children. And the last four children are their eight. Well, they lived in this cave. They're not that far removed from some pretty fragile living conditions in the state of Montana. I think it's hard to remember that we are a young state and that we have a short history. And we have, we have the pioneer background behind us. That means we're innovative. But it also means that we're not that far from living in a cave. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Is there anyone else that would like to offer comment? Not seen anybody in the room. Oh, one more person came in.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello. Uh, my name is Terry Woodhull. And I live at One View Vista Drive, apartment A nineteen. Um, I have actually seen the uh, the map that had little red X's on there where the water leaks were. They are throughout the entire apartment trailer complex, and it's like you go down one driveway and X, 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 down the next driveway. And to me, it looked like the whole thing needs redone. And I was told at one point, I believe it was either June or July, somebody had mentioned that the water bill for that complex was fifty thousand dollars. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what they said. And the other thing I'd like to address, this being specifically for the apartments, is that without this grant, I know for a fact that rent will go up because they'll need the money to fix this stuff. Currently, my income is twelve hundred dollars a month. My rent is nine hundred dollars a month, which leaves three hundred dollars a month for me. And my only saving grace And my only saving grace is that I don't pay electric or water, otherwise I don't know what I do. And it's not for me. There's several other people in the income that are on fixed incomes, that if it goes up anymore, they too will have to find another place to live. And most likely, we'll all be homeless. Because even if you find a place that's seven, eight, or nine hundred dollars a month, they want first, last cleaning deposit, and none of us have that kind of money to where we could just move. Um, so basically, the grant is extremely important for everybody, not just the trailer cart, but the apartments, the whole entire complex. It's, it's basically an emergency situation because like I say, health is one thing. And just the cost of upkeep, just having come in every day, fix it, fix that, fix that, it was just, it's ridiculous. So that's where I view things on this request for this uh, grant.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment on this? I'm looking in the room. I don't see anyone right now making a move to get up. Looking online one more time. Not seeing anything. So I'm gonna close the public hearing on the consideration of community development block grant projects for two zero twenty three. Commissioners, did any of you have things that you wanted to add? It's a conversation for Mr. Gager. Next up, I'm here.
Um, the next steps, we will bring forward a resolution of, of support for uh, the grant application.
Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Lyons?
Um, I think that this neighbor works proposal makes a lot of sense and seems pretty closely in line with the spirit of, of the grant. Um, and uh, I also find, you know, the support in the community pretty compelling. Um, and I find the need to sound pretty great. Um, and so I, I think that it will be hard pressed to find a, a more essential um, project than the one we're hearing from Neighbor Works. So I, I support it and hope that we can help them be successful in that, in that application.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Uh, Commissioner Schwartz, is there anything you want to add? Nope. I will just add, I know the city's been talking about this for a long time, um, supporting View Vista. Thank you, Jan and Terry, especially for sharing your personal stories. I know that it probably feels very vulnerable to share the truth with the community, and we hear you. Um, I'm really excited that we have a commission and a, a staff, a city full of staff that are interested and willing and capable to help support this move forward. And thanks to Neighbor Works as well for all of the good work you've been doing in Livingston, helping keep people housed in a way that's affordable where they can stay in their homes. Do you need anything else from us?
No, thank you. You've done the most.
Excellent. All right, so we'll move on to ordinances now. All right, so first up is ordinance three zero four five, an ordinance of the City of Livingston, Montana, removing fees from the municipal code. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Nudes. The item before you this evening is a um, uh, similar to something that we have done uh, recently with other ordinances where we are beginning to remove the fees from the Livingston Municipal Code, and then they will um, all be codified in a citywide fee resolution. And so um, you may recall in uh, the last meeting, we've uh, removed subdivision fees from um, from that section of code to, to fall into the, the resolution. And the uh, Director Federhoff and the staff in the Finance Office have uh, identified an additional twenty seven uh, sections of the Livingston Municipal Code where fees exist. And um, you will note that uh, rather than specifying fees, we are replacing that language um, with, with the phrase, um, you know, the fees shall be set by the City Commission by separate resolution. And so uh, a- again, um, this should simplify our process um, as far as updating the fees and really actually will provide a, a more coherent um, way for city residents and, and those looking to do business in the city to understand what certain fees are. Because uh, quite honestly, if we have our fees separated in, in twenty eight different sections of the Livingston Municipal Code, it is a bit cumbersome. And, and a good uh, number of these fees um, have not been adjusted since the uh, the eighties, nineties, and in some cases nineteen seventy nine. So again, I think it's a, just a more coherent and user friendly way um, to manage our fees here in the City of Livingston. And I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Danger. Commissioners, do you have any clarifying questions? Do I have a motion on ordinance three zero four five?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance three zero four five and authorize the chair to sign or the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Kale and a second by Friedman. And now we'll open it to public comment on ordinance three zero four five. I'll start with people in the room. I'm gonna look online now. Anybody online? I'm not seeing anybody online either that wants to comment on this. So public comment on ordinance three zero four five is closed. Commission deliberation? Any comments, folks want to add? No, just straight forward. I'm looking at Commissioner Schwartz too, just to make sure. Is there anything you would want to add? Nope. All right. Roll call please.
Chair Nudes.
Sure.
Vice Chair Kale.
For?
Commissioner Freeman.
For?
Commissioner Schwartz.
For?
Commissioner Lyons.
For?
Motion passes. Next up is Action IMA, Mountain View Subdivision Preliminary Platte. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Nudes. The item before you this evening is a uh, preliminary plat for a major subdivision in the uh, western gateway of the city, generally in the city of the, the um, print for less, printing for less uh, facility, though it does not include that facility um, as, as noted in the uh, the packet. It is, it is the land, generally speaking, on the, on the outside of uh, of Analog Drive and, and PFLA. I'm going to see the subdivision, and this item um, was before the Planning Board in August. And the Planning Board um, recommended uh, a, approval of the subdivision with nineteen conditions. And um, I uh, will turn it over to Director uh, Jim Severson to walk through the application and discussion and um, unless you have any questions for them.
No, you're ready to jump in?
Okay, and before I, I turn it over to Director Severson, I would, I would note that um, just as a, a matter of process, um, that this application is, is somewhat similar to a, a previous application that has come before you. And uh, just to find members of the commission that um, that we, we are here to, to deliberate and judge the application uh, as it has presented, and, and this application is, is the one before us. And so um, with that, I will turn it over to the planning director.
I'll just add that I would, um, I'm gonna ask everyone present if they're gonna comment on this to keep their comments to what's before us tonight. And only what's before us tonight for this application. Thank you. I'm ready for, or we're ready to hear Jim.
Director Severson.
Hi, good evening. Um, Grant, would you mind, please, filling up the PowerPoint and you can make that um, the screen and I'll just go from there. Thank you. Um, as you can see, the PowerPoint is pretty brief. Uh, and I will try to hit the highlights of all this rather than, than slog through all nineteen conditions. Um, but I'm happy to answer questions, of course, at the end. And this is a proposal for the Mountain View Major Subdivision. It's a preliminary plat. It is a three phased development. Um, total of twenty four lots. Uh, two of those are proposed to be open space. Um, and two of them will be permanent stormwater uh, facilities. Uh, if you want to go to the next one, please. Uh, so this just shows the um, the location and, and with respect to the city. Again, as uh, Grant said, it's out there by um, the PFL facility in FedEx. Uh, top left, um, I don't know if you can see that the, the yellow dash line is around the blue in that area that is zoned highway commercial. This uh, property is zoned highway commercial as are um, the PFL and FedEx properties. And then bottom right, uh, I just circled what are um, future land use map that was uh, included in the approved growth policy. Uh, uh, and this shows this area to be community commercial. Um, if you'll hit the next slide, please, Grant. Uh, so again, I kind of went over all that at the top. Um, the total amount of open space uh, to be dedicated to the public is twenty point four acres. I did not touch on that specific number. Um, and just briefly, I wanted to remind uh, everyone that for the zoning highway commercial is intended to provide areas for residential structures, commercial and service enterprises, which serve the needs of the tourist, traveler, recreationalist, or the general traveling public. Areas designated as highway commercial shall be located in the vicinity of freeway interchanges. There's some other stuff, but since this is a freeway interchange, I left it at that. Uh, for the future land use map, community commercial accommodates medium to large scale wholesale, retail lodging offices and service establishments typically located along major corridors that can function independent of adjoining development and/or require individual access to public rights of way. Um, and so the next slide uh, for subdivisions um, to be reviewed in accordance with uh, Montana Code Annotated seventy six dash three six oh eight uh, requires the decision by a governing body to approve, conditionally approve or deny a proposed subdivision to be based on the specific documentable and clearly defined impact in the following primary criteria. Um, so I'm gonna list those and I'm gonna give a super brief description of what they are. Um, and then just for the planning board recommendation, as uh, Grant mentioned, um, they recommended the City Commission approve with those conditions identified on pages sixty seven and sixty eight of your agenda packet. Um, and your options uh, would be to approve, approve with conditions, or deny the subdivision. So um, for effect on agriculture, uh, agriculture is defined as the production of food, feed, and fiber commodities, livestock and poultry, bees, fruits and vegetables, and sod, ornamental nursery, and horticultural crops raised, grown, or produced for commercial purposes. Um, neither the plant, the planning board did not, uh, staff did not find that uh, this proposed subdivision uh, would adversely impact agriculture as described, uh, nor did the planning board. So I won't really go into any further detail, but I'm happy to answer questions on that. Um, for effect on agricultural water user facilities, uh, those are defined as any part of an irrigation system used to produce an agricultural product on the property used for agricultural purposes. Uh, since there's no concerns with agriculture, no concerns uh, were, were expressed either for um, any impacts that the subdivision might have on agricultural water user facilities. For effects on local services, local services are defined as all services provided by any local government unit having jurisdiction over the subdivision as well as those commonly provided by private entities to similar properties in the vicinity. Uh, and I, what I'll do here is because there's uh, there's so many conditions, um, I will touch on the discussion at the planning board um, that impacted uh, the rest of these. So for elect on effect on local services, uh, discussion at the planning board was the proposed development would likely increase traffic along Highway ten. Traffic coming off Interstate ninety at exit three thirty to the west and traffic at the intersection of Park Street and Highway ten to the east. Impact fees to fund a future water main or loop to tie into the subdivision would likely be inadequate to fully fund this infrastructure, and the city would ultimately be responsible for meeting the funding shortfall. Concerns were also discussed about the additional reliance on emergency services, and a condition was recommended for a waiver protest for a future um, special improvement district for water and sewer capacity improvements necessitated by future development within the subdivision. Uh, for effects on the natural environment. This finding of fact, uh, evaluation, natural environment is defined as the physical conditions that exist within a given area. Uh, at the planning board discussion uh, was that runoff from the proposed development would adversely impact existing wetlands located at the northeast corner of the subdivision and Eglin Creek. And staff notes, there is no surface water feature named Eglin Creek in the city's GIS database. And um, I believe the area that was mentioned may, but I'm not sure, because I'm fairly new. But maybe the area designated in the state's mapping database as um, seasonally flooded wetlands um, in that northeast corner of the property. Those extend also east from the wetlands uh, that are on the property. I believe that's what was being discussed, the impacts would be from stormwater runoff is, are those um, seasonal wetlands that extend to the east outside the property. For effects on wildlife and wildlife habitat, those are defined as living things that are neither human nor domesticated, and the physical surroundings required for their existence. At the planning board meeting, uh, the discussion about effects on wildlife and wildlife habitat in the subdivision, uh, the potential for fencing and subdivision uh, to harm wildlife was discussed, as well as concerns that improperly stored solid waste could attract bears. Conditions were recommended to mitigate potential conflicts between future subdivision and development and wildlife. Uh, those conditions included leashing dogs in open space, um, public open space, animal proof or um, trash storage um, or storing it inside uh, until trash day, and then wildlife friendly fencing. For subdivisions affects on public health and safety. That is defined as a condition of well-being where in risk of energy to the community at large is minimized. Uh, traffic concerns were uh, above were reiterated um, by the planning board um, such as during a train derailment or when I ninety between exit three thirty and three thirty three is closed during high winds. Uh, there's concern about proximity to wildland urban interface and that um, I ninety may exacerbate wildfire potential with chains dragging from big rigs sparking in dry conditions. Um, and also the prevailing wind uh, patterns in this area. Uh, traffic congestion and potential accidents caused by high speed limit on Highway ten were also noted. And a suggestion was made to request that in the future MDT conduct a speed study along Highway ten to mitigate concerns. Um, and finally, I think I missed one, sorry. Nope. I think that's it. Um, so there were several conditions that I had included in my original staff rec to the planning board. Um, these were just the discussions and added conditions tied to those findings of facts as I just discussed um, that were included in the final um, buffet of conditions, uh, nineteen that I included in my staff rec. Um, and so just for the recommendation, as stated in MCA Section seventy six three six oh eight, um, governing body may not deny approval of a proposed subdivision based solely on the subdivision's impacts on educational services or on parcels within the subdivision having been designated as wildland urban interface parcels. Uh, the governing body shall issue written findings of fact that weigh the criteria uh, A through F discussed above. And based on these findings of the fact as evaluated by staff and as discussed by the planning board and condition, the planning board recommends the City Commission conditionally approve the Mountain View Subdivision with uh, the nineteen conditions included in your staff rec. Happy to take questions. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Chair Nudes. That wraps up the staff presentation portion.
Any questions before we move on? Otherwise, I think the. Applicant team is here. And have you offered them an allotted time?
Um, yes, I generally speaking, I think we've discussed about ten minutes to uh run through a a presentation and um, I think they're ready for that.
Commissioners, are you good with doing that next?
Mm-hmm, I'm going to look to Commissioner Schwartz. Yep, thumbs up. Okay, yep, we're ready.
Good evening, Chairman Nudes, members of the commission.
I'll go by chair for something.
Me. Good evening, Chair Nudes and members of the commission. Um, I'm Chris Naumann. I'm an associate and senior planner with Sanderson Stewart. Who um prepared this application for Livingston West LLC. I'm joined here tonight by Joey Stazak, who's a professional traffic engineer with Sanderson Stewart. Uh, Sumner Annaker, who is our um project engineer. And also um Bill Fanning, who is a legal counsel with Livingston West. And online uh virtually is Richard Smith, who is an owner representative for uh Livingston West LLC. So again, I just want to highlight some key components of this preliminary plat application for the Mountain View subdivision. Located at the northeast corner of I ninety and Highway ten. As has already been mentioned, uh, there was a previous application, um, but this application is significantly different. I just want to. Point out in what ways. Um.
I'm gonna pause for just a little bit. Thank you, Chris. I'm going to ask you to focus your comments on the application that's in front of the commission and not making comparisons between applications, please.
Yeah, happily.
Thank you.
Um, as was noted, this property is um sort of a a loop, a circle of properties. Around um the existing PFL property and the FedEx property. Um, I want to highlight that's um there will be uh no negative financial implications. Um, so I'll talk about in just a second and that the application before you aligns with the the growth policy. Um, again, just a little bit of background, the city annexes property over eighteen years ago and as has been mentioned, is zoned highway commercial. Um, and I think this was a clear intent for developing this area as part of the city's growth policy. Um, but again, the subject of this public hearing is a preliminary plat application. And the sole purpose of that is to place lines on a map. And formally subdivide the applicant's property as reflected in the submitted preliminary plat. Uh, the proposed lots will create a place for development uh where has already been. Planned and in certain terms approved through the annexation and the initial zoning. And subsequent inclusion in the future land use map. Subdivision will include um paved roadways, uh sidewalk improvements. And public access to open space and uh which will be dedicated as parkland. So the intent is to improve the west end gateway as an entrance into Livingston. And comply with the uses that have been already identified by the city of Livingston. Um, as noted, there's a recommendation of approval with conditions um by the by the planning board with a vote of five to three. So we have um twenty four lots. That total uh just shy of of forty four acres. And the parkland uh included in is just greater than twenty acres, which will be um. Maintained by the future property owners association with public access and connectivity, but. Uh, through whatever mechanism is preferred by the city, I think that one condition might speak to this, um, will be. Um, dedicated and designated as city parkland. But the maintenance will remain um with the property owners association that will be formed with the approval of the subdivision. In terms of uh financial implications for the residents of Livingston, um, all of the infrastructure for phase one, which is shown. In the packet, not only in the phasing plan, but also in the the civil engineering sheets, has been paid for. Um, by the applicant. It was new, it was installed as part of the FedEx developments, a large portion of the new infrastructure. Um, and that new infrastructure will not have any foreseeable maintenance needs for decades. Um, future development on these properties will increase the taxes that those that land is currently paying to the city of Livingston, so more money will go to the general fund. From those tax increases. Um, lots that are developed in the future will also be assessed impact fees. And that will uh be earmarked as the city policy for future upgrades to the city's infrastructure. And we've heard at the planning board meeting, I think, um, if I recall correctly, those impact fees have been updated recently. I believe it was twenty twenty one. And are are deemed sufficient by the city to cover those those future costs. Also, there's um conditions of approval, uh, which the applicant agrees to and supports for um waiver of right to protest special improvement districts. And this is a really important funding mechanism for the city. Does uh whether that's to improve water and sewer or potentially put in a future uh on active transportation network. Um, the special improvement district will assess the immediately adjacent and um. Affected properties to pay those expenses, thus sparing that cost from the general taxpayer. So again, the subdivision will um increase tax, the tax base and generate additional funds to cover infrastructure improvements and extend city services. Also like to quickly just point out um that although not re- required by the subdivision statutes. Um, the the city is allowed to consider their growth policy as it relates to the application. And on pages, I believe nineteen and twenty of our application, we do talk about the ways in which we think the proposed subdivision. Aligns with the growth policy. Um, I'll just call call those out uh quickly here. Uh, they include uh goal three point one to prioritize. Infill over expansion by taking advantage of existing and planned infrastructure. Uh, goal four point three um to protect and manage natural resources and open space. Uh, which plan to do through the dedication of the wetlands and other parklands. Uh, goal five point one, provide housing options to meet the needs of all residents. Goal six point one to strengthen and diversify Livingston's economy by supporting industries that increase um employment. Goal eight point two to complete and. To create a complete and well-maintained transportation network within the city. And lastly, goal nine point one, develop infrastructure to enhance community services. So, uh, before wrapping up my portion of of the presentation. Um, again, the the subdivision does have have impacts on city services. And I know there's been a lot of talk about um the traffic impacts. But um, and we provided a uh traffic study, which is a very robust document at the request. Of Jim Woodall, again, not a requirement um by statute of a preliminary plat application. And there's a lot of data in there and a lot of the raw data um can be daunting, so. Um, just as we talked about with the planning board, just wanted to mention that uh at full build out. Uh, the new trips anticipated is approximately four thousand, I think, in this in the staff report. Um, the gross number of closer to nine or ten thousand was was mentioned. Um, but you know, the real impact will be uh during the the PM rush hour. At the intersection of West Park and Highway ten, um, nine additional cars. Uh, being at that queue during that peak evening um hour. And another thing to keep in mind is while MDT's preferred minimum level of service. Uh, sorry to dive into traffic engineering for just a second, um, is a grade letter C. For that intersection, again, uh, West Park Street and Highway ten, um, that that intersection currently um is operating. At a level service of B, C. But the existing operation is actually the west leg, because you actually look at it for each leg of the intersection, is currently operating today at a level of service D. And the traffic impact study shows that um there'll be no. No um impact, negative impact on that level of service with this with this proposed new subdivision. And those trips that were anticipated at full build out of of the subdivision, so. Um, the current intersection is not meeting the preferred level of service and the proposed subdivision will not make that level of service worse. So we want to thank you for your consideration of this application. Um, and the subdivision aims to create an improved and aesthetic entrance into the greater community from the west end town. Again, the preliminary plat is simply proposing to create twenty four lots with ample dedicated open space. Um, and I think these uh, these lots, when developed, if developed. Can align with the sea's growth policy during uh considering all the the zoning regulations that are in place to guide future development. Um. The applicant and the project team have reviewed the staff recommendations of the nineteen conditions. Um, and and find those generally acceptable. Um, the entire team is here to answer any questions you may have uh to to dig deeper into any of the issues. Um, but for the final two minutes, I would like to cede my time to uh Bill Fanning, just to provide some additional remarks.
Thank you, Chris.
No. Uh, Bill Fanning here for Livingston West, Chair Nudes, Commissioner uh Gager. So I'm just here for some brief legal perspective. It will be even briefer if we're not going to talk about the previous application, so. But I became involved in this uh project because the decision impacts. The property owner's substantial investment backed expectations and after all, the property was annexed into the city in two thousand and four and zoned community. Um, commercial in twenty eighteen. Um. This. Um, it will, as a reminder of where we are in the process, we are really only at the beginning and. Should you choose to vote yes tonight for the project, Livingston West still faces uh the next phases of regulatory compliance. Including DEQ water permitting, state building codes, municipal codes, et cetera. And all of these, this regulatory environment ensures that the development is done safely, responsibly, predictably, and in accordance with law. The preliminary pa- plat application is, as Chris mentioned, has been approved by the Livingston Planning Board with more than nineteen, with nineteen conditions. And signing on to the to the uh preliminary plat application where you're planning director and the Livingston Director of Public Works. And so, you know, just to be brief here, we're we're here tonight and the issue is simply whether the Mountain View subdivision preliminary plat application. The state legislative criteria, which the planning director walked through tonight, which this body is well aware of of the elements and. The requirements there, but it just bears reiterating to the public, perhaps, this is not about land use or zoning, but rather. About just drawing lines on the map. I think that the applicant has gone above and beyond in discussing the growth policy alignment and pointing those out, but. It's it's also my duty to point out that that's not required, that the growth policy is not a regulatory redocument as as you're all well aware. As well, so. I would just note that in tonight, in closing, this is the third public meeting on the this preliminary plat application. There's been a lot of input on this project and um it's. He it's a, it's a robust um well-vetted project and uh I I can't really add too much. To what Chris has said, but he just would ask you that for the reasons that are expressed tonight that you approved. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I would just lay out a process for the commission. I think we can begin with um. Clarifying questions from the commission and then move into public comment. And then um, we're going to go through our shared agreement as a commission where we walk through the steps of. Um, pros, challenges to overcome, creative solutions and checking where all the commissioners are before we go to a motion. Does that work for the commission? Uh, Commissioner Schwartz, does that work for you also? And then just since Commissioner Schwartz is remote, are you comfortable if I. When it's time for us to talk, Commissioner Schwartz, that you go first, just because I know there's a bit of a lag and I want to make sure that. You're not.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, so first we'll start with um. Clarifying questions from the commission. So this is not a. The deliberative part where we'll walk through the steps, but if there's questions from anyone. Um, that was a great time. Uh, Commissioner Schwartz, do you want to go first?
Um, who's the, who am I directing my question to, Mr. Um, Mr. Gager?
Yeah, always Mr. Gager and then.
Yeah, um, I I just have one question on. What is our deadline for approving or denying this application? Um. I'm I'm unclear where we're at in the process. I know we have a a legal deadline, um. But I'm 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 unsure what it is at this moment. That's all I have. Oh, you're.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Fantastic question. Um, statutorily, uh, this application must be decided upon by October fifteenth.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Lyons?
Um, Mr. Gager and maybe be a Mr. Gager to whoever you want to direct it to. Um, when I reviewed the the subdivision regulations, um, I see. Uh, a requirement that um for preliminary plat that uh. Blocks must be wide enough to allow for two tiers of lots. Unless a narrow configuration is essential to provide separation of residential development from traffic arteries. Or to overcome specific disadvantages of of topography and orientation, or unless. The governing body approves a design consisting of a regularly shaped box indented by cul-de-sacs, and so I'm curious. Um, when I look at the um, the preliminary plat, I don't see uh two lot deep blocks. See single lot deep blocks, um, and so I'm curious if there's some way that. Uh, this application is complying with that regulation that I'm just misinterpreting. Um, but it my my, the way that I read that and the way that I see that. Going there, but it looks like those things are in conflict.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Um, I've my uh my belief is that you are referring. Generally speaking, to pages fifty nine through sixty one of the subdivision regulations.
It's from the subdivision regulation that didn't record the page. Um.
So um, having uh talked with your staff, my my understanding is is that um section of the the subdivision regulations. Uh, relates to residential subdivisions and 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 the the and I'm I'm happy to turn it over to Director Seaverson. It requires from your detail, but my understanding is that is for the residential subdivisions and and given the zone. Um, the district that that this subdivision outpatient is in, which is highway commercial. Um, while residential doesn't allow use of the highway commercial, um, it is it is not a certainty that this would be a residential subdivision. And so it's actually being treated as a commercial subdivision, again, in the highway commercial zone and and given the allowed basis.
Okay, I see it in that design and in the standard section of of the subdivision regulation. Um, and yes, on page uh fifty nine, uh, referring to blocks. And I I do see that reference in that um, in that regulation of. Is essential to provide separation of residential development from those things. Um. But I don't see, to me, it does not read as specifically applying only to residential um subdivision. Uh, but we have an attorney and we have a professional and I'm the reason I asked the question is to get their their opinions, so I appreciate um. Mr. Gager, your interpretation there and I, if you are comfortable with being able to hear from uh the city attorney and or. Your professional kind of.
Um, I I certainly am am happy to uh to turn it over to um to uh.
Um, I I certainly am am happy to uh, to turn it over to um, to uh, to. The 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 planning department, I think, probably is is more appropriate for this. Um, but I I would note for for those folks paying attention, I know we're we're talking about the top of page fifty-nine of the subdivision regulations. Um, and um, it it does note that the governing body uh, or it the. Blocks must be wide enough to allow for two-tiered slots unless narrow configuration is essential to provide separation. Of residential development from traffic arteries or to overcome specific disadvantages of topography and orientation. Or unless the governing body approves a design consisting of irregular shaped blocks indented by cul-de-sacs. And so um, I I think the latter is what we have here before us. Um, but uh, Director Seaberson, is there is there anything you would like to add to to my comments? Uh, related to to this section of the subdivision regulations?
Uh, no, I I agree with you. I think that um, in this case, I would say for the last. Part of that um, regulation. Um, approves the design consisting of irregularly shaped blocks. Indented by cul-de-sacs, I think both are are present in the proposed configuration. This is not a standard uh, grid. Um. Street layout, uh, it certainly um, has cul-de-sacs um, as as the phasing progresses. Also, at the very end on the east side, um, that provides access to the um. Lot one, which is the the permanent wastewater, uh, stormwater treatment and then, um, sorry. And then the other lot, as well as the twenty-foot-wide um, access is meant to both of those open space lots. Another thing, um, that I would draw your attention to on page. Um, I just found it. Uh, page sixty-one of our subdivision regulations. Um. Number six, uh, or sorry, uh, seven, B I I, um. It goes a little further in talking about alleys, uh, does uh, shall be provided in all residential subdivisions. And then alleys will also be preferred, the preferred method of providing utility and garbage pickup access in non-residential. But it does not stipulate that it is a requirement. So the way I would, and and I would leave this to the city attorney, but. That to me is is a call by the Public Works Director as far as what would work for them, but it's all I got.
Thank you, Jen. Just hopefully that addresses your your question, Commissioner Lyons. Um. It's. It is, it addresses my question, thank you. Um, that's all I have for now. As far as questions for staff.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Mr. Gaeger, um. We keep talking about this loop system of water sewer. Um. And if it's needed and if it's not, I mean, I feel like we've had conversations about this back and forth. Um. We've never really seen a quote for how much that would be to. To completely complete if it was needed. Um, and so I'm wondering. If you know, you know, the impact fees from just this subdivision. Would they fund? That loop? Hmm.
Uh, uh, excellent uh, question by Chair Kail. Um, the uh, the the short answer is that. Um, the cost of the loop is at this point unknown because it has not been designed and. Um, in in conversations with the Public Works Department, there are uh, many possible routings for a water loop. And so um, the 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 cost of that may may vary. Um, that said, regardless of of the cost. Um, a- as I've I've done a little bit of math on the subject, it is it is unlikely that. The impact fees would pay for construction of the water loop um, or or construction of a a multi-use path as as was mentioned earlier. However, um, as as was noted, the um, the the recommended conditions from the planning board include a waiver. Of protests for special improvement districts and just as we are using a special improvement district for. Um, uh, wastewater improvements in the the Green Acres subdivision in in town. Um, that would be an option for this area of of the city of Livingston for um, us to to create a special improvement district to fund those. Uh, those improvements when they are decided. And and again, a a special improvement district. Um, uh, you know, puts the responsibility for cost of of certain infrastructure improvements. On the area of the city that that benefits and and there is a a line drawn. Um, and and the affected properties bear that cost through a uh, a property assessment each year over the life of the special improvement district.
Do you have any more more questions?
Yeah, um, Perry and I were out there walking the ground. Um. I've been on the commission quite a few years and I've wrote proposals for this particular thing. Um, unless I'm wrong, uh, a lot of work was done when it was originally built, the printing for less. To have expanded uh, usage. For that, other than what they were doing. So an awful lot of work was done in the beginning when they built it. And then when I read the reports of uh, analysts of. The particular program we're talking about. Uh, there's a question and then there's an answer and that's the most thing I've seen of any piece of property. That we've had where there's present a, yes, this is gonna happen and this is gonna happen. There seems to be a lot of negative things around this whole thing whenever we bring it up and I'm a little amazed, so I might be wrong. Uh, uh, it just seems like it's a a winning proposition for the city. Uh, of heavy businesses and also getting uh, some particularly maybe housing in the future, a bunch of things. And uh, take advantage of what was there when it was built in the concept and continue on, so. That's right, everything that I've read about it as far as answering questions for myself seem to be thought about, so. Um, I see it as a plus that I just see it as a good project. I view.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have one question for now. Um, Mr. Gaeger. So I know. We as a city have updated many things in Land U slot over the last few years. And we, you know, we're gonna be updating even more things in the next year or two. But I'm wondering, would the way the development is developed now? Um. It's creating some of these parcels that Commissioner Lyons was referring to, the way the initial development went. Would that be allowed in future subdivisions to create parcels that were constrained in this way? Does that make sense? Like, the the shape of the way it was dealt developed. By virtue of how they started development on this parcel is not allowing for the things that we're prioritizing as a city, such as. Um, the grid network, um, alleys and residential areas, uh, et cetera.
Thank you. It's a a a an excellent question, Chair Nudes, and and I guess I would would remind you. Um, folks who are not remind you, maybe point out is a better word. Uh, the. The application before us is the first subdivision application for this parcel of land or any of those parcels of land out there. And so the 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 previous development that has occurred in that uh, area of the city. Um, occurred without subdivisions and and they were owner-developed properties. And so, um, while the the city had. Uh, some input more recently on the the FedEx um, project because that went underwent our um. Refined uh, uh, site plan review process, the the original um, construction of the the printing for less building actually. Um, was before uh, we had a robust site plan review process. And so um, the the layout that we have before us. Um, certainly could be possible if if there was a large um, parcel of land that was. Um, subjected to to partial development for the subdivision process and and that really, I think, is is part of the issue. Um, that that's inherent in 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 consideration of this application is that there were decisions. Um, made on the 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 use and the layout of this land uh, prior to the subdivision application. So those those decisions by by the owner, by the applicant, um, uh, actually not the applicant because they don't own that parcel of property at this point. So those decisions that were made before the time of of application really have dictated some of the. The issues before you and some of the considerations before you. So, you know, unfortunately, yes, it it is possible. Um, that that not unfortunately, realistically, it is possible that that the situation could occur on another parcel. Um, but again, we have a a more robust uh, site plan review um, process with with administrator removed than we did when this this parcel was initially developed. But uh, yes, possibly it's still there.
Right, add to that answer. And then.
Hmm.
Um. If I understood your question. Or. I maybe interpreted your question all a bit differently from um, how Mr. Gaeger did. Which was. And and I'm, I'm bringing this up because it's important to the thing I want to add. Your question was, would the constraints that we see today? Namely, I think maybe the the curved linear street network. Would that be allowed? To be created in a context. Of greenfield development where there are no other. Existing geographic constraints. So that, is is that what you meant? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, as one example, the curvilinear streets are one example. I think we could think of other examples of potential limitations if this. Were zoned residential, for example.
It reminds me of other decisions we've made. On the commission, where there was a similar situation where past.
Hmm.
Past planning decisions were affecting how that how a new thing comported with our current regulations. Um, and so. My perspective, and I know this isn't quite time for it, but I don't want to lose this thought. Um, my perspective is that at some point, those decisions need to be made so that we can be making consistent decisions going forward.
Hmm.
Um, and we, if we if we rely on past. What we might deem today. Incorrect decisions to continue to facilitate similar decisions going forward. We're never gonna make progress towards a a addressing our larger goals. Um, and so, um. We we've faced this problem in the past and we will continue to do so if we continue to make decisions that same way.
Any other comments from commissioners or uh, clarifying questions? I have one. Vice Chair Kail?
Mr. Gaeger, are we? Are we bound to? Because I'm coming off of your question and what Commissioner Lyons just said. Decisions ha- decisions were made in the past. On this piece of property. They've made those decisions. They. They did what as they wanted with their property and now they want to do something else. And if it doesn't comport with the way. That we are indicating in our subdivision regulations and everything else on how we want to see. Growth happen, whether it's the grid system, alleys, all of that. Are we bound to allow this because it's. Because of past decisions that the landowner made on how they developed, they initially developed their land? Does that make sense?
It it makes perfect sense and and uh, no, the the answer to the question is no, you are not bound. Um, the the city commission has the ability, as Director Seaberson pointed out, to approve, reject, or approve. With conditions. And so uh, you folks do have those those three options before you decide, as in.
Thank you. I think what you're referencing is when I was the dissenting vote. That it was a while ago.
I don't remember how you voted.
I remember that subdivision. Um, all right, so we're to the point of the program where we will open it to public comment first. Yeah.
I have a question for the development team, if I may.
Oh, sure, yeah, we can do clear, just let's direct everything through. Mr. Gaeger still as a good practice.
Yeah, for.
You have the floor?
Thank you. Mr. Gaeger, I have a question for the development team regarding their process for. Deciding internal capture rates. Um. They might explain what that means. Um, and uh, I find. I'm not gonna deliberate on it, but I'd love to hear uh, their, how they chose to chose the internal capture rate that they chose.
Excellent. I'll turn it over to you folks.
Thank you, Mr. Gaeger. Um. Your nudes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, uh, Joey Stazak, Anderson Stewart, Traffic Engineer. Um. Thank you, Commissioner, for your question. Um, a lot of things we've discussed at the planning board prior, but um, when we talk about. Trips generated for a subdivision or development and there's a lot of layers to kind of unravel there. So what we presented in our traffic study, kind of starting from the top, we have a gross number of trips that was kind of that. Isolated development, what they would generate for a standalone development. But um, as you work down, we talk about internal capture and in internal capture trip is a trip end that starts or ends inside the development. And um, vice versa, ends or starts again at another um, parcel within that development. So they never exit the subdivision onto the external roadways. So there's zero net increase of traffic. On the external roadways. Um, they are trips that occur internally from um, location to location. Um. The the way to calculate that, um, and the way we followed our our traffic impact study through the Montana Department of Transportation. Um, they lay out the guidelines and specifications for a traffic impact study. Um, all trip generation comes from the Institute of Transportation Engineers' um, Trip Generation Manual. And that's where these national rates are provided to say this size of a hotel or office will generate X number of trips. Um, it also helps govern some distribution, what percentage comes in and out of developments at different times of the day. And then furthermore, it goes into internal capture. Um, and it says. This type of residential development and this type of commercial development, depending on the size, depending on the specific type. They have this interpolation of this number of trips is absorbed by this use, by this use, and those numbers never again. Move external of the subdivision. So kind of following up from that discussion of the planning board, these. These rates of internal capture are published from this national manual. Um, from that extent, we kind of break down a grid network of all of our development and say X to B, B to A. You know, or X to Y, Y to X and and all the kind of intermittents um, of the subdivision. It is broken up into kind of a hotel versus retail versus restaurant versus residential, and there's different percentages based on that. Furthermore, we look at the AM peak hour, the morning commuting hour, what that um, internal capture rate is. The PM peak hour as well as the daily number. So all of them, all of the percentages are based off the national. Um, numbers, which again are part of the MDT standards to use the current manual, um, which we did for our study. Um. Kind of get into weeds with all of that, but that's kind of the the subtraction point on the trip generation table you'll see in the in the traffic impact study.
Thank you very much. I I have comments on that, but I'll wait until we talk about.
Okay. Any other clarifying questions? I'm gonna look at you one more time, Commissioner Schwartz, and see if you have any follow-up questions.
Um, no, I don't, but um, just a reminder, it's eight o'clock. Or, I mean, seven o'clock. Seven o'clock your time, eight o'clock my time.
In the future, in the future. Um. Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, for that friendly reminder. So if there's no other questions, clarifying questions, I think it is a good time for a break before we go to public comment. Okay, so um, how about a motion for a ten-minute break?
I'll make a motion. We take a ten-minute break.
Thank you. Motion by Kale and a second by Lyons. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion passes. We'll see you in ten minutes. All right, so we're gonna pick up where we left off. We're going to first open this uh. Mountain View subdivision preliminary plat conversation to public comment. We'll start with people in the room and then we'll go online. And we'll get a little time. And we'll get a little timer going. We'll have four minutes. Vice Chair Kale will let folks know when there's one minute left, either. Some combination. A one minute hand wave. Thank you, Vice Chair Kale. So folks in the room first. Hi, Tom, do you wanna kick it off?
I'll kick it off. My name's Tom Blue Rock, one twenty-two and a half South Second Street, downtown Livingston. I'm a board member of Friends Park County. And. We've submitted some written testimony for you guys. To consider, which is a lot more detailed than you can do in four minutes. But I, but I, my, our concerns sort of boil down to this. That parcel currently is used for light industrial. And that was its original intent as the developer set. Since that time, it was, it was, it was rezoned to highway commercial. And then the the city rejected its highway commercial a couple of years ago before your. We're gonna redo it again. Or we're gonna rethink it again. But it's absolutely scary what that thing could become because of that big commercial zone. I mean, it allows almost any use that you can park and up to six story buildings. That could be the, including the Jetson property, that's almost a hundred acres, which is double the size of downtown. I mean, that could be a separate commercial center, completely separate from the city. That has has nothing to do with the rest of the city. And we compete with the rest of the city. It's completely separated. Our position is we'd like it rethought. We're not supposed, we're not supposed to mention the original proposal, but we originally said, why don't we just keep it as. As light commercial. And frankly, even though we're not supposed to say it, this. This has the same amount of developable land on it as that original proposal with the same, with the same uses. And it was rejected last time, and I don't know why you shouldn't reject this stuff.
Thank you, Tom. We're not going to talk about the previous proposal. I'm gonna pause people's comments if they start going off the direction of what's in front of us tonight. Yep, thanks, Patricia. Thank you.
You have the ability to say yes or no. And it isn't dependent, as we discussed, on mistakes of previous commissions. I was on the city commission fourteen years ago and said absolutely no annexation. Of this parcel of ground, ground. And had, and I've talked to my fellow commissioners since then, and to a person, they are so sorry. That they annex this. My apologies to you, I extended to you. Because it was a mistake. It was this very serious mistake to annex this property. And it's going to lead to another serious mistake and another serious mistake. Until it's finally adds up with something like Nineteen Avenue or whatever you end up with. With this, I call this Bozeman East. I do not call it Livingston West. Now. I, first of all, it is unsafe and I've sent you a letter. You turned down Paradise Ridge subdivision. And in that letter, I talk about the fact that if you have kids, you have kids that are surrounded with dangerous. I ninety, I. Highway ten, nothing but danger, the the railroad. And then if those chain, those children are in the fifth grade. And they want to get to their after school activities and their parents aren't there, guess what they get to do? They get to walk two point four miles along the shoulder of Highway ten. To get to their after school activity. What's happened is a camel in the tent. It started out with, oh, we just want annexation. Then it went to, oh, well, we're just gonna have. Light industrial and then it went to, oh gee, now we want highway commercial. And it will continue to, the cattle will continue to get into this tent. And to grow and to grow. It's a malignancy. As far as I'm concerned. But the real problem, the real problem is. The only thing that stands between our wonderful, amazing historic downtown. Survival. Is this kind of thing? And I am telling you to please consider voting no tonight. Vote no. It is a dangerous, not well thought out thing that has a future that is pretty. Pretty frightening to people like me. I have been president of the downtown building owners for fifteen years. I have fought for twenty years. To save our downtown. Now you decide tonight, oh, well, it's, and by the way, these conditions are manipulations as far as I'm concerned. Our downtown cannot compete with them. You take a look at Valgrind. No, no downtown along I ninety. Has survived I ninety. Because hotels come in at exit three thirty, the Mary comes in at three thirty-three. And suddenly we don't have customers in our downtown. So our growth policy is supposed to expand from a healthy downtown. And we're supposed to have the kind of growth from our downtown. Well, that you can kiss our growth policy goodbye. It's not gonna happen because we will not have an economically viable downtown if you vote yes tonight. Or even if you vote for conditions tonight. This is a very dangerous thing that is happening to our. Poor little community of seventy, eight hundred people. Please, please, this is not even thought out. Please, please just consider voting no tonight.
Thank you, Patricia.
I'm Suzy Barnett. Somebody stole the pen.
But we can round up another one.
I'm Suzy Barnett, eight Broken Will in Livingston. I moved here ten years ago on purpose because I loved the feel. I loved. The area and didn't move here to change anything. I'm also a real estate broker. I've owned a real estate office in Colorado and here since two thousand and one. So and I also was a commissioner for twelve years in Colorado. So I understand the process. I really appreciate Jen and her. Her group for. Working so diligently. I would want to remind you that they have recommended that you guys accept it with. With changes, which is a great part about that whole procedure. They can see a good development, but see how it can be better. And so that's the recommendations that they have made to you guys. And I'd hate to see a whole board get decision thrown away. With all the work and the due diligence that they put into it. Just real quick, I want to say a couple of things from the real estate and. A lot of people that we're seeing currently that are moving into Livingston are people who had to move away some years ago. And through the whole COVID thing, they've realized that they can work anywhere. So they're ready to come home. They're ready to come home back to their roots. They're ready to come home sometimes because they are being called back to take care of aging parents. Those are all reasons that we have still a lot of people that are wanting to move in and. Apart from what a lot of people think, it's not just a bunch of people from our state wanting to come in here and bring their own agendas. That's really not. Always the case, sometimes perhaps, but you see that anywhere. But a lot of them are just wanting to get back to their roots. We need, I as a realtor, somebody asked me earlier, how's real estate? Real estate's great, except there's nothing to sell in Livingston, Montana, not really. The inventory is quite low. Of course, interest rates have a lot to do with it, but that has nothing to do with anything about this. But people are wanting to get back and there's no place for them to go. A lot of them are wanting to bring their businesses here to. Like I said, be able to get back to their roots. Another thing that I find so sad is people who have children who are about to graduate from high school. They can't live here. They can't afford it. I've got kids and grandkids that can't afford to live here and I find it quite sad. And so I think any type of growth is inevitable. Yes, it needs rules, it needs regulations, it needs. Planning boards, it needs commissioners. I totally get that process and I appreciate it. But I do think that this is a good project. I've walked over it with Mr. Field. And I think it's a great project. I will say this, I love our downtown. I think it's vibrant. When I go to a historical downtown, I also want to see what else that area has to offer. I don't just stay right there. I'm, I don't think I'm the only person that does that. So I don't agree with the fact that it's gonna. Kill, kill the downtown. I think it will further enhance the downtown. So I would encourage you guys to vote yes. I think it's, there's not a developer on the planet who would come into a town and want to develop something if there wasn't a need. There is a need. People who want to live in downtown, want to live in downtown, people who don't, don't. They want to live a little bit out. I've heard a lot of people who are interested in development out that direction. Because they don't want to have to go across the railroad tracks in the morning and wait to get their kids to school and that sort of thing, which. Is silly, but nevertheless, I appreciate your time and I encourage you to vote yes for this project.
Thank you, Suzy.
Thank you.
Thank you for your confession, Tom. Thank you, Tom. Hello.
How you guys doing? I'm Manny Getz. I live three O two Oakley Park Road. And I'm not here. To tell you guys what to do and what not to do. But I'm here to give you some information and facts on economic development. I was in economic development in Virginia for ten years and I've been in economic development in Montana for twenty-five. And our mandate a couple of years ago. And we service the Bridger District Services, Park County, Livingston, Bozeman, Gallatin, and Madison County. And we were bringing businesses and in such high levels, there was no place for people to live. And everything became unaffordable. So our new mandate is to figure out how to create housing. And I've met with three different developers. I've met with the city with them. And they've come in over the last four or five months. They can't build here. Because the cost of land, the cost to bring utilities to these properties is outrageous. And their unforeseen numbers, they're not willing to take the risk. With this project, what I see is everything's there. Somebody could file a building permit tomorrow and start building in forty-five days. So this meeting started earlier with, we need housing. We don't have affordable housing. We don't have affordable apartments. And what I see is we studied the east end of Livingston with the hospital and the Watson piece. I met with FEMA. We're five to six years out before we get their reports to be able to build. So that means five to six years of no housing for Livingston for affordability, affordable housing, affordable apartments. On the north end, I don't know which commissioners were here, but when Bill Mullenfeld filed for rezoning up there, they were told no more rezoning. On the north side of Livingston until we have an underpass or an open pass. When's that gonna happen? So the only place that we can grow is a couple of spot lots in Livingston, which we'd looked at. But the cost to get the utilities there to build on mass is too expensive. So you gotta take what's called a green space piece of property, which this property has. I look at it that. The property along the interstate would be perfect for multifamily and affordable housing. Because it's the least valuable to a developer and I can say that because I am a developer and I developed back east. When I moved here. Twenty-five years ago, I didn't want to develop because I love Livingston. I raised my three kids here. Two of them had to leave. Because I can't afford to live here and one of them is living in my basement right now. So our mandate is how do we create affordable housing in this community? How do we afford affordable apartments in this community? Bozeman overbuilt last year. They were charging twenty-one hundred dollars for a one bedroom unit. Now they're down to sixteen, seventeen hundred bucks, cheaper in Bozeman than it is here because they overbuilt. And now the numbers are coming down, which helps for the affordability of people. So again, I'm not for the project. I'm not against it. I just want to bring out the facts. That this place is ready to be built on. And I don't know of any others other than spot lots here in Livingston. I met with developers. And it's too costly for them to bring sewer and water to these places. And, you know, we have traffic issues everywhere, but I'd rather see, I'd rather sit two cars behind somebody in a traffic light. And watch people live in a tent, where people's garages and you have to raise your families that way. Thank you.
Hi, James.
Good evening. Commissioners, some manager. Name's James Willich. We want to wake south up. In town. So I have the unique, maybe not so unique experience of. I used to go to school in southeast Washington and I had a girl and girlfriend in northwest Oregon. And so I would drive. Through Kennewick, Washington on Highway three ninety-five south. And I would pass through the town of Kennewick. So neat little town, nineteen ninety-eight. Driving downtown, restaurants, all kinds of cool stuff. Three ninety-five was just the highway out of town. Now let's fast forward to two thousand and sixteen. I was just there. Eighteen years later. There's nothing downtown. And all of the development is all along Highway three ninety-five. The cheap gas I used to get for ninety-eight cents a gallon is now a hospital. And it is surrounded by all kinds of restaurants and businesses, hotels, other things, mixed use stuff. Didn't add a whole lot more houses in that whole area, but. That's what it did. It basically killed the downtown. There's shuttered buildings. The one restaurant that opened up, it kind of closed again and opened up. It, it didn't bode well for the overall downtown Kennewick, the historic district of Kennewick. Kennewick is still there. They're all, they're growing, but the historic downtown is just a bypass. You gotta sort of know how to get there to get there. I say that you should. Way that against the zoning that we have there. We have the most permissible zoning in that whole forty-four somatic acres. And it concerns me that there's, it's just open season out there. So. Pay attention that there's a downtown that's a, or a potential new downtown, a couple of miles from our historic downtown. And there will be competition between the two. Just like eighty-nine south is competition for our historic downtown. This is just going to be the west end. So, thank you.
Thank you, James.
I didn't use one of my minutes. Got to hear thirty seconds.
I'm sorry, Tom, you cannot. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to give comment? How about online? Are there folks online that like to give public comment?
I would like to speak.
I think that's you, Stacy.
I know, it says Robert. I'm, I'm on my phone and I. Can you still hear me? I'm out of town, so. I just would like to, I'm Stacy Dovick, four ten South Eighth, Livingston, Montana. As chair of the planning board, I just also wanted to reiterate that I recommend the passing. Of this application with the conditions as stated by the.
Um, Stacy, just one second. Tom and Manny, can you guys take it out into the hallway? It's sorry, the, the owl picks up everything and it's just kind of hard here. Okay, okay Stacy, we're gonna start your time over. Um, there was just noise in the room that was making it hard to hear you. Do you mind starting over? I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm Stacy Jovic, four-ten South Eighth, Livingston, Montana. And I um, would like to recommend the passing of this application uh, with the conditions. I think the planning board worked very hard to, to try to meet the, the needs or the questions that some of the planning board members had by putting in different conditions. And um, I also think that the that, that the Mountain View subdivision is just trying to follow the rules that are set up by the subdivision, by the city's um, subdivision rules. And that, you know, in, in development, you have to find a balance. Um, I was recently in Castle Rock, Colorado. Halfway between Denver and Colorado Springs. Um, I've been there every year for the last several years. They were founded in eighteen sixty-one, they had a four-block downtown. They have worked diligently to um, keep their downtown and they have been so successful that it is so congested, you don't want to go downtown anymore. So you know, you, you have to find a balance. Um, they have a lot of development outside of the downtown as well. But there is somewhere in here, a balance. And I think that the uh, as far as the transportation goes with the Montana Department of Transportation, you know, that's a, a problem that the city has had with the state for a long time and how to manage the traffic when it's um, closed due to the weather. And I just want to um, say that I hope the commission will vote in favor of this application. And tutorial lines um, comment on, on the grid, street design. If you, if you just took the circle loop and you didn't have round edges, you would have a grid. Just wanted to point that out. You'd have a lot of dead ends, but anyway, that's all and um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stacy. Are there other people online that would like to offer public comment?
Uh, Melissa, it's Frank Schroder.
Hi Frank, go ahead.
Okay, just turn this thing off. Um, I'm Frank Schroder, co-founder and former board chair of Friends of Park County. My address is four seven seven Millcrick Road in Prey. And um, I have a question, it, what has changed? What has changed your mind from last year and, and from the, the uh, the creation of the growth policy when the planning board worked so diligently for so long in coming up with that draft growth policy? You know, long hours, you know Melissa and others who are on the phone, long hours, line by line and so on, and we think everybody was really pleased with the result. Uh, we lauded the efforts of the planning board to step away from sprawl and uh, be in favor of compact growth that preserve both the community's uh, character and the lands around the city. And so here we are a year later, same kind of subdivision to allow the same kind of commercial sprawl development proposed by the same applicant for the same property. Um, I strongly urge that the commissioners uh, resolve as a board to, to uh, really deny this application. We appreciate your service to our community and thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank. Anybody else online?
Yes.
Uh, you know, Dennis net.
Sure. Um, thank you. Um, Dennis Glick, four eleven South Yellowstone Street. And um, I, I guess I just want to reiterate what Frank Schroder just said, uh, he kind of stole some of my thunder, but um, listening to the uh, proponents of the projects uh, information, they were pretty light on how the project um, reflects in support our new growth policy that so many people worked so hard on. And I think the reason why they were light on that is, as Frank said, it, it doesn't support that policy and I guess I would summarize its shortcomings, um, three things, location, location, and location. Um, you know, the other day, I got on my bike and I rode around the northeast and northwest quadrants of Livingston on the north side of town. I've lived here thirty-three years. I was blown away by all the new development that I saw. I had no idea that was happening. Um, most of it was residential, uh, a wide variety, variety of housing types, um, sink, small, large, single-family unit, multifamily. I thought it was great, but it was a, a great surprise to me because I keep hearing about the lack of building that's going on. I think it's booming over there. And um, the best thing about it is it is contiguous with the community footprint. Um, a lot of it's in fill, it's exactly what people wanted to see in the growth policy. Um, Mountain View is not. Um, finally, uh, I like to call the Mountain View project the zombie subdivision. Um, because it seems like we've killed it several times, but it keeps coming back from the dead. And uh, as someone that's, you know, spent a fair amount of time going to and watching commission meetings and planning board meetings, testifying. When I see these bad projects being resurrected, I just think to myself, am I wasting, I, am I wasting my time? Um, I hope not. And um, with that in mind, I hope that you vote no against this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there anyone else online that would like to offer public comment?
Yes, Dave.
So it looks like Dave Miller and Randy, I hope that you have comments.
Could you tell who was first?
I think Dave Miller is.
Thank you. So first we'll go to Dave Miller and then after Dave Miller, we'll go to Randy Carpenter. Thanks. Um, Dave got that first and just start with your name and address, please, for the record.
Dave Miller, one-one-three West Park. Um, thank you for letting me speak. I'm, I'm, I'm very disturbed about this whole thing. It's Livingston's a very, it's, it's a gorgeous city. It's got so much to lose by trashing it out. Trying to be like the rest of America where, where it's white bread America and a, and I, I hope you consider again that the ugliness of this project, it, it really has a big influence on how the town is gonna look. Take some pride and, and save your town. Don't be, don't be the city council that, that allows suburban sprawl, that allows the big developers to come in. Yes, affordable housing is a big deal and, and yes, I have a bunch of ideas of how to do it and how to do it in a pleasant way that won't trash the city. There's, there are other options than, than trashing it like, like you're planning on doing. Please vote against it. Thank you.
Dave, I'm sorry, did you, did you say your address for the record?
One-one-three West Park.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Can I go ahead now?
Uh, yes, Randy, go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, uh, city commission. Uh, my name's Randy Carpenter, um, speaking on behalf of Friends of, of Park County this evening. My address is eleven oh eight South Black in Bozeman and I'm here to testify in opposition to this subdivision based on its public health and safety risks. Uh, at the August thirty planning board meeting, uh, board member Jesse Wilcox explained her opposition to recommending approval of this application by reminding the planning board that when the property was rezoned from light industrial highway commercial in, in twenty eighteen, it may have been done under the assumption the city voters were about to approve funding for additional emergency services and an overpass over the rail line to uh, safely connect the north side of a town. These steps would have provided additional protections and evacuation route in the event I ninety was closed due to a fire derailment, but those steps weren't taken. And fires, including fires started by the derailment of a train carrying crude oil near the interstate. Um, our real risk is residents of Mozier, Oregon learned in, in twenty sixteen. That town was saved in large part because the normal high winds were not blowing that day, but fires in combination with high winds are very familiar to us in Montana and especially Livingston. And we've read about fires that were started by passing cars and high winds that knocked down power lines. So things like gas stations, motels, RV parks, all of which could be built on this subdivision under current zoning will mean increased risk to people and property from fire risk resulting from a combination of train tracks, passing cars, dry range lands and and high winds. So the Montana subdivision require, uh, criteria require you to consider safety risks. And we think that there are too many for this kind of development in this location with too few, few conditions of approval to prevent it tra, tragedy. And uh, I, we hope that you deny this application and I want to thank you all for your public service.
Thank you, Randy. All right, is there anybody else online that would like to offer a public comment? And I'm gonna do one more scan in the room. Anybody that didn't get a chance yet to stop? Not seen anybody online one more time? Right, so public comment for Mountain View subdivision preliminary plat is now closed. So what we're gonna do next? Commissioners. Um, we have the pros and challenges bit to work through, but I think I'd like to circle back to clarifying before we do that because there were some things set up, said in public comment that we might want to get clarification on. Does that work for the commission? Okay, I see thumbs up from everyone. Do you want me to go first? Yeah, okay, I I actually want to clarify a couple of points that were brought up about other things that happened in town. I was on the commission for the second zone change request on the north side for a north town development. I believe there are a couple of other commissioners that were here for the first one and it actually that decision from my memory didn't hinge on a crossing, it hinged on our growth policy at the time that our growth policy didn't support increased development. Um, that was our prior growth policy. I would welcome if other commissioners that were there at the time have a different memory to chime in, but that's my memory. And then regarding the justification for um, a crossing to increase health and safety, of course, like that's always part of the conversation, but it's my understanding that some folks were actually proposing a crossing in that area to incentivize development. Um, which is one of the reasons why the commission and the public were discerning about a location that was outside of where we've identified increased development on the north side of town. That was actually in fact, in the county. Um, so I think it's a little bit more complex and I just want to like offer some of my memories to those, to those um, bits that were brought up by the public, that it was, there was a bit, a few more layers there in the decision-making. Um, and what was shared tonight. Commissioners, do you have any um, follow-up questions or things you want to clarify before we move into talking specifically about this project? Not see anything? All right, so um, I will ask Mr. Gauger to please, if, are you able to do notes again like you've done in the past, so we can just sort of see? And then hopefully that makes it easier for Commissioner Schwartz to, um, remotely to track everything in addition to the public and the rest of the commission. So we'll start with um, we'll start with, uh, these are like, I'll think of them as like the positives or the pros to the proposal before us. And I'll start again, if you don't mind, with Commissioner Schwartz, just since he's remote, so it's a little bit easier to for him to participate. Not to put you on the spot, Quentin, but did you want to kick us off with the some of the pluses you see to the project? And you are on mute, sir.
I have trouble with my mouse, I apologize.
Oh, it's okay.
Um, I had to wait. Hey, um, I'm gonna pass on this first round, thank you. I'm still forming thoughts.
Still forming thoughts?
Yeah, I'll pass on this first round.
Okay. Um, other commissioners? Uh, things you like about the project? Do you want to chime in and say what you like about this project?
What I like about it?
Yeah.
More revenue for the city.
Okay.
Um, is one thing. And uh, from all that I read and all that background of it and, and the recent uh, stuff from these fellows here. Uh, it just seems to be a positive thing. To my way of thinking, I don't know where the downtown comes in and all this stuff, but um, and there was a lot of work that went into this originally that meant it was easier for business to come in and take advantage of the things that was built by the original people that started it. I think that's a plus, so. Uh, I tried to think of the negative things.
We'll get to that, we'll get to the negative next after we all do positives.
And, and along with it, we should come housing, which I think is needed anywhere that we can get it. So I don't know, maybe looking at it the wrong way, but I just see it as a positive, so.
Commissioner Freeman also mentioned businesses, making it easier for businesses to come in. Thanks for starting us off. Other commissioners, wanna go next? Do you have anything you'd offer for pluses with us? Commissioner Lyons, everybody, Sherkeel.
I think that Commissioner Freeman covered. I think I had.
Commissioner Schwartz, did you have anything you wanted to add to this list? Can you see it all right on your screen?
Oh yeah, I can see it fine.
Oh, good.
No.
Okay. The only other thing I would add is um, this is kind of like a positive and negative, but I'll do the positive aspect. So the the infrastructure is already laid out in the, in the places that are not in the city. You know, because this was a real lollipop annexation. Um, so one positive attribute of the subdivision is um, sort of, what sort I'm looking for? Setting the tone for how we would want future development to happen if it happens um, in that space in between, you know? Paying attention to what people are saying in the county as they engage with the city, there's some people that really Paying attention to what people are saying in the county as they engage with the city. There's some people that really do want annexed into the city. And so it's an opportunity, I think, to like um. I don't know what's going to happen. I'm not looking for us to annex things into the city. But my point is, is it's a chance to influence what future development might be like. If this does pass. Does that make sense? Thanks. I mean, you got it down. Um, any other pluses? Not seen any? All right, we'll move to the uh challenges column. Unless you can think of a better way to phrase it. Commissioner Schwartz, do you want to start on this one?
No, it's a tough one. Um. Well, um. Comes down to traffic, basically. And the lack of any comment from MDT on this and uh. But I mean, that's that's typical with um anything that. You know, MDT doesn't react until it's already uh. You know, built. It's like with the hospital, trying to get the speed limit change here um. Which still hasn't happened. Um. Takes forever. So yeah, traffic from the development. Coming into town, that would be a great thing. That means uh that they're utilizing, you know, um. The resources um in town, so. Um, right now, that's that's the one challenge I I find of this project is um. The increased traffic, especially with um I ninety down. When we have wind events and snow, they yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Who would like to go next?
Go that. Can I add some nuance to the trap? So?
Yeah.
Really appreciate the engineer's description. I used to teach transportation land use planning, would bring you in for the four step travel demand modeling part of the course to describe it. You do so really well. So I appreciate it. The reason I was asking about internal capture, though, is that um I find twenty five percent to be really high. Which makes me concerned about the estimates in general. Was looking at a paper published um by the person I used to teach that course with. And uh he gave a a figure in that paper, published in twenty ten. Looking at the average internal capture of mixed use planned mixed use developments. So like a development that's that was um. Done with a single owner um with the intention of of incorporating uses that were compatible with each other, different context than what we have here. Um, found the average in the Portland region was fifteen point nine percent of internal capture. There were higher rates, particularly in areas where those mixed use developments were far removed from other competing set uh activity centers. I think that the discussion of what this might do to the downtown um would would kind of play into. How you might expect um internal capture to 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 factor in here. If you were to look at. The long list of potential uses in in the subdivision. If you were to increase the intensity of of some of them or decrease the intensity of some of them, you get vastly different. Uh trip generation estimates. So for example, if you were to to double um. The amount of gas station stalls. That would actually bring it up by fifty percent. It would bring it to almost fifteen hundred um or fifteen thousand. Nine thousand nine hundred ninety two, I think, was the total gross trip. So close to fifteen thousand and um daily trips. We would expect those to be coming from and going on to the external network. All that is to say. I am concerned that potentially those those uses provided for those estimates. Might have been cherry picked in a way to diminish the potential impact that we could see in terms of traffic. So I think that concern of traffic is. Is quite valid and somewhat unknowable and potentially much um. Greater than than the estimates that we saw in the application. I have others, but I just thought I would kind of. That one made sense to go after um.
One of your shorts. I heard. I heard. Two others that he named in there that I would like to put up potential impacts to downtown. And uh. A very wide variety of potential uses.
Yeah, can I can I add some color to that?
Yeah, I was hoping you'd just give us your whole list and we can work through the commission that way.
Great. Um, so when I think about what might happen here, because we're not. We're not really considering it. We're not considering the development. We're considering a subdivision, right? They described it as the um the drawing of lines on a map. So. It's hard to know what's going to happen between those lines. As a as a someone who studies. Land use and transportation. What I would do to infer or to to estimate, and that's the best we can do is infer or estimate. What might happen is to look at the best analog. Right? The the best thing, the closest thing we could compare this situation to. To me, the best analog would be exit three thirty three in Livingston. You look at the lot sizes and that's that's really what we're talking about is is the pattern and size of lots. You look at the lot sizes and three thirty three. They're actually really comparable to what's being proposed here. I bet. The folks who made who who worked on this plan. Thought about. Since they they looked they looked at analogs like that too, to see what would be successful on the market. What can they sell? Because that's what they're, that's what, that's the purpose of. Of cutting up the land is to put it onto the market. So we want to do that in a way that is going to be successful on the market. And you look at and you look at successful analogs. Um, you might think of thirty three thirty three, you might think of Four Corners um to the west of Bozeman. So. I forget what but which one that was related to, but it, you know, it was related to the um. To the kind of unknowability or doing the best that we can to to. Look into the future of what's going to happen there. I. I would like to point out. Um, there was discussion from the applicant. And from some public comment about the vote from the planning board. The applicant said that the vote was eight to three. And that's true for the second planning board meeting because we had to. We had to do a. That's.
Or five to three.
They said. Five to three, excuse me, five out of eight. Um, there are nine of us on the planning board. The reason there um that it was five. To three was that one of the planning board members who had attended the first meeting was not present in the second meeting. If you were to count their vote, it would have actually been five four. Um, and so it was a pretty close decision. Um, that was not uh, that has not been said, and I wanted to make sure that that came across in the meeting. One of the so. My my issues or the not my issues, but the the negative elements are effects on traffic, which is um related to. In terms of findings of fact and primary criteria. Um, that's that's related to effects on local service. Another challenge is the effect on the natural environment. We saw some public comment about the potential impacts to wetlands. Um, some a- all of which have been included in um. The public. Open space designation. Um, but because the wetlands aren't developed, doesn't mean that there will be no impact of the development upon those wetlands. Um, wetlands are obviously the lowest point uh in the development and things flow into the the lowest point. Um, so I'm concerned about the effect on natural environment, particularly the effect on wetlands and the connected waterways. We also got a public comment that was not made directly tonight um. About the effects on on public health and safety. Um, particularly in the event of a of a disaster, whether that be from the railroad or a natural disaster. The potential. Complicate com- complication of uh a new center with a potential uh evacuation route. Is again somewhat unknowable, but very concerning. And so the the potential impact to um disaster evacuation. Uh, is something that I'm concerned about and would affect would have an effect on public health and safety. Another challenge, which I brought up in a in a question to staff. Is that I am concerned that the develop the preliminary plat in the development as proposed. Does not actually comply with the subdivision regulations. Um, as I interpret that that regulation that I read. Would would it be helpful? Should I read it again or should I be free?
You have the floor. It's fine if you want to reiterate it. I think um it was made clear though by staff. You're talking about the double locks?
Yes.
Yeah. You can still restate it though if you want. That's fine.
Okay, I. I will. Restate it. I must find it.
I'm more concerned with a great process than brevity.
Okay. Um, in the subdivision regulations under blocks, uh, the the regulation reads as follows. Blocks must be must be wide enough to allow for two tiers of lots unless. A narrower configuration was essential to provide separation residential development from traffic arteries. Or to overcome specific disadvantages of topography and orientation. Or unless the governing body approves a design consisting of a regularly shaped blocks intended by cul-de-sacs. Where the governing body, we're deciding what kind of design to approve or not. And the reference to residential development. Comes after the word unless. So blocks must be wide enough to allow for two tiers unless. This is required for residential development. So the way that I read that is that this does not actually comply with our subdivision regulations. Um, I think that as a commission, we're tasked to make this land use decision based on on three things. Does the does the proposed development or subdivision comply with regulations? What are the impacts of this proposed subdivision or development? On the primary criteria laid out by state statute? Um, and then lastly, or firstly, however, uh you want to think about it, does. Does the development or subdivision? Is it in line with and does it further the the vision of of the growth policy? We heard from uh the applicant's attorney that we're not allowed to consider the growth policy in our decision. On the subdivision. That's not how I understand Montana State Statute, the um our. Uh, restriction on considering the growth policy is that it cannot be the only uh thing that we use in determining um our decision. Uh, but it requires a consideration of the growth policy. I'm looking up at the at what's on the board to see if I have included everything. So I had traffic, which is effect on local service. Wetlands, which is effect on natural environment. And then uh potential evacuation in case of a disaster effect on public health and safety. My concern that it might not actually fall over the subdivision regulation. Uh, this is as much for my benefit as everyone else's. And then I have not spoken about how I don't. How I think it goes against the growth policy. Should I talk about that as well? Um, the applicant suggested uh that. The. Proposed subdivision. Was in accordance with or um in support of goal three point one to prioritize infill over expansion. I'd say. Sincere issue with that assertion. Uh, I think it's a dishonest and inaccurate definition of. A construct that is essential for our interpretation and implementation of the growth policy. Infill does not mean simply. Increasing the intensity of use anywhere within. The jurisdictional boundaries of the city. That is not what infill means. Um, I don't think I need to define infill for the commission. Um, and you know, everyone else who contributes with the growth policy use that um construct in good faith. And so I'm just going to assume that we're all capable of doing that. So I think that goal three point one is is not satisfied uh is contradicted in fact by by this uh potential subdivision. Then there's goal three point four. Which is to encourage a responsible growth in Livingston by evaluating proposed developments against the ten principles of smart growth. Um, I won't go through all ten principles of smart growth, but there were three that stood out to me that this seemed in stark contrast to. That would be principle four, create walkable neighborhoods, uh a satellite. Development of any kind. It's very um suspect to um to think that that would be walkable. Uh, at least outside of that development. Principle five to foster distinctive attractive communities with a strong sense of place. That will be literally impossible by just cutting up lots and bringing them onto the onto the market. That's literally just not something that we can do here. Um, and then principle seven, strengthen and direct development for its existing communities. That is the one. Um, to me, that this is most grievously uh contradicting, and I think is one of the. Most important kind of considerations within the overall vision of the growth policy that this is just so um out of line with. Uh, there's goal four point two, which is to enhance the overall air and water quality in the area. Um, I think.
Can you pause just one moment? The the third one that he said I think was missed after smart growth was.
Strengthen and direct development towards existing communities.
Thank you. I just want to make sure before we hit on it.
I appreciate it, Chair News.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. Thank you. Goal four point two, which is to enhance overall air and water quality in the area. I think that this will um diminish water quality in the area. I. It's hard to imagine how it could, how it would. Uh, goal six point one, strengthen and diversify Livingston's economy. By supporting industries and initiatives that increase employment opportunities and personal income. There's an objective within that one of six point one point one, which is to support existing local businesses. I I uh agree with the public comment that we heard about the potential impact to existing downtown businesses. They're they're fighting. Highway commercial development at exit three thirty three right now um and chopping up. Chopping up and putting on the market uh lots at another um exit is going to uh exacerbate if not. Compound that that problem. And uh, that's it for me for now. Thank you for everybody's time.
Thank you for. Sharing your lists. Who would like to go next? Any drawbacks to the project? Does you want to go?
Yeah.
What happened? Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I think we covered it. We will.
Okay. Vice Chair Kail.
Uh, yes, I I have some and I probably am going to um talk about some that Commissioner Lyons um brought up, um but kinda don't wanna put finer point to a few things. Um. So when it comes to effects on uh public health and safety, I am very concerned about the fire risk at this property or really any other disaster, particularly fire for me though. The two outlets and eager us um to this property ground the same road. Not very far apart on on highway ten where when we have wind events or anything else. The highway traffic gets routed down. Um, it seems pretty easy for a fire to start from the highway and burn down into the property or the railroad and come the other way. My concern is there's no back way or alternate route into this property. And if highway ten is backed up with traffic from the freeway, because it's a wind event and there's a fire. There's plenty of fire hydrants at this property, but every fire truck is in town. How do they get to this property and stop the fire? How do these people get out? If that road is blocked with semis trying to get onto the highway. Um. That would be nightmarish. It makes me think of Maui. It makes me think of the Marshall Fire. And quite frankly, if we had a disaster like this, that's on us. We approved this. If people were to die, that's on us. Because we would approve this and we allow this to happen. Um, I'm very concerned about that. Um, so you know, there there's no other in or out. The fire trucks can't come off of I ninety and four wheel across mount like giant hills to get into that property. So I don't I know that that's for me is is really worrisome. Um. We walked this property um last week with some of the staff and some other things that pub for health and safety that's stuck out to me were the lack of sidewalks. There's some really great new ones, but if you look at lots three, four and five. Um, there's no sidewalks here. And there is not a sidewalk on the PFL side as well. There's a gravel trail deep within their um landscaping that you can't see very well. And my understanding from this application is that those sidewalks will not be put in until each one of those lots is developed. So if lot four is developed, there would be a piece of sidewalk there, but then there would not be a sidewalk at three and five. We were walking from the dedicated open space at lot two and came down the road where PFL spills out onto Angelo Drive. And those cars come out of there and you can't see people. So if people are walking in the road, they're gonna get hit by a car. And if we don't, if if there's no sidewalk there to begin with, you put a hotel at lot four. People come out to walk their dogs or take a walk. They're gonna be walking in the road. Um, and I just, I think that that's very problematic.
Can you show your spreadsheet again, please? But we wait just a second to make sure you got it all before you. And then Vice Chair Kail also mentioned, so she named lots three through five for sidewalks. And then she also mentioned um that the sidewalks on the developed property are actually gravel paths.
Mm-hmm. Like a winding gravel path. A lovely thing. I'm sure to come out of PFL and walk around on your break seems very nice, but people on the other side would never see that. Um. I'm also concerned with the impacts of the wetlands and the the water. It was very obvious when we were walking out there as well that in this section of road um that would be developed in phase three off of the wetland. Where that road would go seemed like there was probably a spring right there in that road bed. Um, so I I would be concerned about the road being built there and then the the city's responsibility maintaining a road that probably would not maintain very well. Um, so I do have concerns about that and what liability that would be for the city to continue to maintain. Um, I'm concerned about this sewer water loop that we would not have enough impact fees to pay for. Um. It makes me feel like it would force us to encourage more growth in what now folks are calling the people at West Livingston, that we could pay for that. And I don't know that that's what this commission has in mind and what we would like to see in the future. Um, that's concerning to me. I am concerned about the impact of downtown. Um, looking, you know, from the information from the traffic study, it said at peak time in the in the um PM rush that there would be nine extra cars at the Park Street and Highway ten. Uh, traffic light. But then Commissioner Lyons, perhaps you can help me. How many trips did we say are in that area? Yeah.
So it was, do you want, do you want me to?
I do, I do.
So it was nine hundred and nine thousand nine hundred ninety-two gross trips. Uh, they estimated twenty-five percent of those gross trips would be internally captured, meaning it's not gonna actually affect traffic um on on that corridor. I commented that I think that that is is uh quite a generous internal capture rate. I also commented that if you if you change those uses or those intensities a little bit, which is like entirely possible. Those estimates can go up by a lot or could go down by a lot. Um, and so it's a it's it's their provision to us of of their best guess, and I'm concerned about the validity of that guess.
And my concern would be if they're guessing that nine nine cars are coming to Park Street. Those folks that are stopping at this subdivision to go to a hotel, eat a restaurant, whatever it is, they're not coming downtown. So this will affect downtown. And we look at the growth policy and we look at, you know, some of the some of the objectives and goals in the growth policy. You know, community gateways that celebrate its character. Chain motels and a big convenience store gas station does not celebrate Livingston's character. We have one exit that looks like that. Why do we need another one? Um. I just I am concerned. What if we now make Livingston and we have a whole new commercial center out of the highway and nobody comes downtown? And I know a lot of folks have lived here for a long time. I'm not someone who's lived here as long as others. I've been coming to Livingston for a long time. My brother lived in Livingston in the late nineties. He was a police officer here in town. I remember what downtown Livingston looked like then. And there there wasn't much going on. I can tell by that. There was a Chinese, there's a Chinese restaurant, the theater. And that was it, or you went to the bowling alley. Um, so you know, to think that we would pull business away from downtown um is my concern as well. I think I'll stop there. For now, alright.
I guess it's my turn. I'm spoiled by a second screen at home and I don't have one here, so I need to like adjust windows so I can. So I went through in addition to using my own brain, I went through um all the comments from the public as well. Uh, some challenges I guess I would start with is um I wanna just name the inherent problems that we inherited. So I wanna name that this was a the initial development constricts the land use. The remaining land use. I want to name the lollipop annexation that happened in two thousand and four, for lack of a better description. That's something we've inherited. Um. In twenty eighteen, the zone change went from light industrial to highway commercial. We inherited that. Um. I wanna name that the Jen put this in her presentation, but our growth policy future land use map names is this commercial. And many of us wrote those growth policy meetings and we um you know, we worked on it and we didn't change it to light industrial or anything else at that time. So that's something that we inherited from ourselves, some of us. Um, also, the city already owns the infrastructure that's uh supporting the existing development. And when I say city, I mean our whole community. Has already um, you know, that that's in the ground already. It's already there. There for health and safety, um we don't have anything outlining how to protect uh properties from neighboring incompatible uses. Or does that make sense? Like there's no suggestions for how to um maintain that safety between different developments and such a diverse range of possibilities. Um. There's no public access road to open space lot number twenty-four. Regard regarding wildlife, um the trash cans were already mentioned or the brave proof can't cans, but there's no FWP suggested a wildlife corridor and that's not um in this proposal. I think this one has already been named like fire risk. There's some things that weren't included to mitigate or reduce fire. Uh, I think that was already written. I think, thank you. So yeah, in addition to Vice Chair Kail said evacuation, I would offer um uh more instead of evacuation, more like uh fire resistant things that could be added. Um. Yeah, resilience or resistance. Thank you. Uh. There was a letter from the United States Postal Service and that request is not being considered in this application. It was part of application materials, I believe, but it's, there's no solution. Uh, they requested something specific. I have stormwater. Also, I believe that a preview, I think a couple commissioners already talked about stormwater and the wetlands. We can so I don't need to restate that. Uh, there's no mitigation of noise and wind. Um, so those are two external factors that we all recognize, noise from I ninety and winds just from its proximity to the landscape. Um, no mitigation was offered. Let's see. Uh, this goes with traffic impacts. I think that there was no indication of like internally, like how traffic could be uh mitigated to improve public health and safety. So not just traffic from the development, but like there's things that could be done within the development to improve public health and safety. And those things were offered. Um, in terms of walking or pedestrian safety, Vice Chair Kail already um addressed sidewalks. Um. You know, if there's gonna be people out here, there's gonna be school buses coming at some point, I would imagine, because the school buses um go where the kids are. Uh, there's no suggestions for pullouts, so there's no place for the bus to stop safely off of the road where um children could load and unload. I would say that's a public health and safety issue. And then as we move into I think there's, I think there's room for parkland development. Um, this doesn't offer much. I think there's some things through city um city code or city like the ordinances and resolutions where we could um we could we could have a bit of a conversation about um the parkland development, what that would be like for the city and the community that's not currently in it. Uh, the last thing I would offer is the covenants. Um, they're not in line with Livingston Municipal Code. Um, so I would say some of the things in their covenants that are in conflict with code are ADUs, um pets. You know, what kind of pets people can have, what, you know, dogs being leashed. I noticed it's like only leashed in open spaces, but we actually have or you know, we actually have Livingston code saying where dogs need to be leashed and where they can be off leash. Um, building requirements and building standards. Um, some of those are in conflict with our local municipal code. And so that's a concern to me. Um. Because I think our, you know, our code goes through a very robust process, so I take it seriously those processes that this is what the public wants um for these allowed uses. That we should be following that 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 public that public created outcome. Um. I I'm not sure if I mentioned a trail that we still have that. Um, the multi-use path, I guess we could call it to figure out. I know that's something the city's been talking about for many years. Um. Uh, the last thing I would say is, you know, I've been on the planning, I was on a planning board before Commissioner Lyons was here for probably like I think like three and a half years. Just over three years before you were elected and that's the bison to you. Um, and a big of conversation's been going on a long time, long before I was a commissioner is um these entry points of the community and like the gateway design overlay districts. Um. Particularly for these parcels, as a matter of fact, I mean, these are the ones that are most often discussed um that the community wants a real input into what the gateways of the community look like. So I would say that's a challenge that that's not that's something still to do, just like the um some sort of multi-use path. Um. Some other things that I've heard from the public would be, and I think maybe this has already been mentioned, like protecting the downtown, that's sort of already mentioned. Um. I think the water loop was mentioned. Um. I think that that's probably it. That's just sort of going through the list of most of that came from the packet and application. Alright commissioners, did anybody think of anything else they want to add to this list before we move onward? Otherwise, we need a motion to extend the meeting. Yeah, and a break. So um who's gonna second that motion? So a motion by uh and Commissioner Freeman uh Schwartz, you still with us?
Yes.
So you have a motion by Freeman and a second by Lyons to take another, how many minutes do you want? Five, ten? What do you want?
Ten.
Ten minute break? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we will see you back here in ten minutes and we'll pick up where we left off. Alright, thanks everyone for sticking around. Oh, we are. Gonna get back to it, so the next thing in our process will be. The creative solutions thinking. So we'll go back through the list and we can look at it and see if there's, um. Solutions to the problems that we named or to the challenges that we named. And so. I wonder if there's a way. To zoom in a little bit, just on the two columns that we're watching. Just while we're working through them. And then, uh. Maybe since they're numbered, we can just take them one at a time. So. I was offering Commissioner Schwartz to go first, I don't know if you. If you have anything on the list you can think of solutions to, or if you just wanna start with number one. This is like our green hat thinking, or we're like thinking about creative solutions to the challenges that we've named.
Yeah, I'll pass on the first round.
Alright. Did you wanna name anything? I know there was something that you had brought up. Earlier about sidewalks.
Yeah.
So what was your idea for sidewalks?
Well, I, I, that's what I envision out there, there's sidewalks, a lot of sidewalks and I, I would hopefully we could go for housing rather than business. When I'm looking at sidewalks.
Okay. So I think this won't be perfect, Mr. Gager, but we're gonna. Go through it anyway, so, um, which number is, did, I think Vice Chair Kail brought up sidewalks, I'm just looking for it. Uh, number ten. So we'll just fill in numbers and it'll be imperfect, but. So what is a solution then, um, so Commissioner Freeman wants. Better sidewalk connectivity. Can we add, um. Sidewalks to those lots that. Vice Chair Kail named. Having those put in. I don't know if you wanna name that like number ten, just so they like.
Okay, and I was going to actually do straight throughs as we work through the conditions.
Just do it your way, just do it how you wanna do it, that's fine, it sounds like you have a plan. Um, may I add something to that, based on what you said? ADA compliance sidewalks, because it, that, that gravel path isn't great for people with mobility. Challenges, um. So are we saying that we're gonna require this prior to, uh, development? Is that a possibility? Uh, we'll let her get this question answered and then we'll come over to you.
So, um, yes, you, you do, you folks do have, uh, the ability to, to condition, um, related to sidewalk construction, I, I would offer. There is an existing, um, recommended condition, uh, six E, which states. The developer is responsible for sidewalk construction, I will say. Hand it out to you folks earlier, there were some, um. Requested clarifications to conditions that were put forth by the applicants, um, prior to, to the meeting, um, yesterday. And, and so, uh, while I, uh, while I noted that six E states the developer is responsible for sidewalk construction costs. Um, the applicant had updated, requested an update to say. The developer is responsible, or excuse me, each individual lot developer is responsible for sidewalk construction and associated costs. And so, um, they're, they're looking for that clarification rather than it being from the, the subdivision, if you will. Um, which would fall to each, um, each owner of the parcel for development, and so.
Well, no, it doesn't get to the problem, if there's many neighborhoods in Livingston where. The sidewalks are developed as the properties develop and what you end up with in a neighborhood is dead end sidewalks all over streets. And undeveloped parcels in the middle of neighborhoods, and so people that are like pushing a stroller or. Uh, limited in mobility and even people aren't limited in mobility, like find themselves having to like. Walk in the street for sections and we're talking about a walkable. Like safer. But particularly with the kind of development that may happen here, I don't know that we wanna be pushing people into the street where there's no sidewalks, if there's. However, many thousands of cars. Commissioner Lyons, you have the floor next, you wanted to say something about sidewalks.
I actually wanted to say something a little higher level.
Okay.
Sometimes that's my role, it's like. New framing, um, some green hat thinking that I'm, that I'm kind of hearing, but that hasn't been. Identified, we're, we're, what I'm hearing right now are conditions. I'm partic- I'm not particularly interested right now in talking about conditions. Um, and I think that in order to. Have a. Have like a direct and honest discussion on this green hat side, we need to. I, I would like to know where we are, what we're talking about. So we could spend, you know, we could spend another however long talking about potential conditions, but then we could get to a vote. Where someone puts on the floor a vote to deny. And then we worked for hours on conditions that never actually get implemented. I don't think that's particularly fair for the applicant, the public, or for us as commissioners to. Work through one potential outcome that we haven't decided as a commission is where we wanna go. Does that make sense?
I hear what you're saying, and I think, um. Part of the process that we agreed to is to put on a green hat as well. If you wanna do like, uh, a round of check-ins with the commissioners. Before we go under this like kind of thinking, I think that that's fine.
Well, I, I think, I think that green hat thinking is good, and I think we can, I think we can identify right now, have green hat. Idea is placing conditions that might satisfy some of the problems, I don't think we should get into. Satisfying all of the problems. As the green hat thinking, right, I think we can say, conditions that satisfy the problems move on to other. Creative alternatives that we have not yet tried, but working on minutia. Of addressing each one of the, the problems that we've, that we've identified, I just think is, is super, super inefficient.
Um, I think that it, I hear what you're saying, and I think. There might also be commissioners that wanna approve with conditions, and so I also don't want to. Leave them out of an opportunity to make a motion as well. So the intention from the process that I laid out in the beginning was to. Think about the problems we've named, I don't think that all things would be happening in a condition of the subdivision, I think there's some things that we noticed. That are issues. There are totally other issues that would get solved in a different time and different place, but that we've identified as problems with. The tools that we have as city government, whether it's legislative or executive branches. And so I don't wanna lose the opportunity to make sure also that we're addressing those things that fall, that came up in conversation tonight. Um, and may or may not be. Related to the subdivision, I also don't wanna discount that some commissioners might wanna approve with conditions, so. I don't ever think that good process is a waste of time, a waste of anybody's time, if it moves us into a place for making our best decisions.
I do think that going through and trying to satisfy, trying to create a condition to satisfy. Each one of the, the negatives that we find out, pointed out assumes that, that we want to approve of the conditions.
Okay, so let's do, um. Let's do a round from the commission and we'll do sort of like the gut check, where are people at? Before we move forward with thinking about conditions, does that sound good?
Really appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem, thank you for working it out with me, I appreciate the collaborative, constructive, respectful dialogue, Commissioner Lyons. Um, let's start with you, Commissioner Shorts, are you wanting to? This is like the red hat thinking, this is like, uh. Where are you at on this, do you wanna talk about conditions or not?
Yeah, forever to move forward to a vote, um, it looks like. Some of you are looking for condition, added conditions to the ones that staff already. Um, has mentioned or. Or that, you know, came out of the planning, uh, committee. I, I agree with what Tori, you know, I, I kinda agree with what Tori is trying to say. Um, here, um, especially with all the negatives, you know, where you. Are gonna be able to. Meet conditions on all of those or, or what, so. I don't know, I'll, I'll yield at this point and see where we go.
Who would like to go next? Do you wanna talk about conditions?
Yeah, um. What I, what I envision, you got two major businesses and they're, I mean, really solid business. I want a lot of sidewalks. And I want the sidewalks so that people build a housing and they have a network of working out and walking and. That's my vision, that's why I'm having a hard time. And I understand the concern about this downtown part. So I'm trying to restrict that kind of thinking to the, what we've got, we've got a valuable piece of property, we have two great businesses to support it. To me, housing would be, if I got businesses like that, it's housing, I'm not looking at stores. So I don't know if I'm on the right track or not, but that's, that's what I envision. So when I make that vote, I want people to think about that, I'm not, I'm, I wanna protect everything. But we got a great start out there and, uh. Like to see it continue. Everybody needs housing throughout the whole country here. What I envision, when I go to Bozeman and I go to a hospital. And then you go away from there and you see sidewalks with housing. No businesses up there, sidewalks with housing to support those beautiful hospitals that they have, so that's what I'm envisioning. To keep that kind of pattern. And not have a seven eleven or any stores or, there's a big store right down at the bottom, and when you go to the hospital. That's all, it's all commercial, but that property itself is being protected, so I yield.
There's a whole lot of negatives on that list. I don't know that we're gonna mitigate. Enough. I'm sort of far enough at this point. Just as a gut check. Yeah. Uh, I'll go last then. I, did Tori go? Oh, I thought that. Sorry, Tori, go ahead.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lyons, I apologize. Thank you, and sorry also, yeah, I thought you would start with your statement, I'm sorry.
Grateful for the opportunity. I think that there are some, some. Parts on that list that are conditionable, and I actually really appreciate your word. Uh, Commissioner Vice Chair Kail of mitigating, I think that there are a good number of them on there that could be mitigated through condition. There's a difference between mitigate and eliminate. And there's also. A good deal on that list that I cannot envision how they could be. Mitigated through conditions that are specific to geography and, um. Existing transportation infrastructure, et cetera, I'm not gonna get into those specifics, but there are ones that I can't imagine, uh. And maybe that's, uh. Maybe that's red or black hat, but that, um. That I can't imagine being able to, uh, condition away. Um, and there are ones that are very important to me, um, and I think very important to our community, and, uh, I, I can't. I can't see justifying via conditions of, uh, a yes vote for this, uh, subdivision to. Um, members of my community, so. Thank you for.
Yeah. I would say. You know. Where I'm at with this is I'm frustrated when, as a commission, we inherit. Problems. And then we have to make the best of a situation that we didn't create, so in this case, I think that there's, uh, been some unfortunate choices made. With annexations and the development itself that find us in a difficult spot. I think that there are many impacts that were brought up tonight that should have been considered. Back when the zone change happened, but they weren't, and the zone changed, and we also didn't catch it on the future land use map. I think, you know, somebody said tonight, don't be the city that approves sprawl. I think that we inherited this, this sort of sprawlish situation as a commission. Since it happened, the annexation happened prior to all of our times on the commission. And. You know, somebody said tonight. What has changed, what's different now than a year ago? And I would say a remarkable amount of things are different in the city of Livingston than they were a year ago. We find ourselves in a situation where we have an executive branch that's gonna openly and actively support the will of the commission. Um, we didn't ever talk about conditions before, when I was on the commission. Prior to the current executive leadership. It's something that's standard for subdivision review in most places is conditioning subdivisions. It's something that we don't do, we haven't done in Livingston because we haven't had the kind of support as commissioners always to. To be creative, like the legislative branches elected to be creative, to meet the needs of the community. I also think, um. That we as a commission can either try to improve subdivision proposals and try to actually influence the outcome of them, or we can let development happen to us. There's more than one way to develop a piece of land as we've seen from this parcel in front of us tonight, and so I think this is an opportunity to try to make. Something better than it might be otherwise and meet the needs of the community and the desires of the community. And if we don't take this opportunity, my concern is that we have. We are going to let development happen to us rather than trying to. Really direct that development with the understanding that. This was already annexed. This was already developed, it was zoned before half of us were on the commission, three of us were not on the commission when it was rezoned. There's already city infrastructure going out to this property. These are not things that we can like feasibly change at this time. And so I have a real fear of, um. You know. Not taking an opportunity to come up with like a collaborative solution to some of these challenges. If we're not open to the conversation, then we're, we're choosing to not engage in a solution. And so I would be interested to see, you know, we're in a place that we've never been in, where we can actually condition things. We're in a place where we're doing site visits, we've never done site visits with staff before. That's not something that happened in my time as a commissioner prior to Mr. Gager being here. A lot of these things that were put in the challenges column, I talked to department heads. I talked to city staff about it and I asked them all the hard questions that we've been asked by the public. And I, you know, there's answers that we haven't had a chance to talk about yet. Because we're not doing the creative solution thinking. And so I would really, I think that it would be a disservice to the people that have worked on this longer, particularly. And so I would really, I think that it would be a disservice to the people that have worked on this longer, particularly some of the staff that took time out of their, their workdays, um, to come answer these questions and do multiple site visits so that we could meet without violating quorum laws. If, if they weren't able to answer some of these questions themselves as the people who are actually the boots on the ground. You know, it's easy to like pontificate about public works challenges or fire challenges, but it, for me, it's also very helpful to hear from the people who implement the policies and, um, do the engineering work or, or trained in disaster. And, and you know, what, what do you do with a community in times of disaster? Like I want, I want to hold space to get those que- questions answered since we actually have an executive branch that's willing to like to answer those questions in public. I think we owe it to the public. So I'm in favor of going through the process that's longer because I, I believe in good process and I believe in transparency and I think that the public has a right to hear the answers from the people that work for the city. That's where I'm at. Commissioner Alliance?
Thank you. I just would, I, I, I appreciate your points and they're super considerate and, um, I would like to just make one um, point about your comment that, that, uh, we want to avoid development happening to us, I think is how, how you phrase it, or you know, like, um, have a chance to, to influence development as opposed to having development happen to us. I feel strongly, and I, and I, and I, one of the reasons I want to make this comment is I should have included this before. I feel strongly that, um, the preliminary plat doesn't um, conform to the subdivision regulations related to blocks. And so I think a fantastic way to ensure that development will happen to us is to make decisions that disregard our, our, our existing regulations because it tells developers that, that those are more suggestions than they are requirements. And that, um, I foresee a litany of future problems by setting that precedent. Um, and we've heard um, some interpretation, um, of that regulation. Um, and my interpretation of that regulation, um, is that this preliminary plat does not, um, abide by it. And so making a decision that that nullifies a, an existing regulation is, um, is asking for hazard and, um, and poor process of development.
Thank you for your comment. With all due respect, the last subdivision that came through, I believe I was the dissenting vote because it wasn't complying. And the other commissioners were fine with not following subdivision regulations. So I do think that, um, I do think that it's layered and that we're all doing the best we can and there's no absolutes. I also think if we don't have the conversation about creative solutions, that we won't know what's possible for future subdivisions and future developments. I think it's a disservice to the government process if we don't talk about how we can prevent from being in this situation again. And that's what I think that next column of thinking will allow us to do. I think it's much bigger than one subdivision. So that's why I want to have a conversation and figure out what conversations do we really need to be having as a government. So it sounds like, I don't know that we're a stalemate. It sounds like there's two commissioners that think that things can't be overcome. Sounds like Commissioner Friedman wants to talk more about sidewalks. Commissioner Shorts, where are you at?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'd like to move on. I mean, let's, uh, are we at the point, I guess I'm trying to follow this.
So the question is.
Would we want set conditions?
That, that's, that's the question is, do you want to set conditions or not? Some commissioners don't want to. Do you want to set commissioners? Cause right now we're at a split.
Quite frankly, I'm, I'm happy with the conditions that have been asked for and that the developers agreed to at this point. You know, we can, you know, debate this thing to death. I understand. You know, the frustrations of, of the zoning, the way it is now and, uh, and what it was, but, um, it's something we have to live with and do the best we can. And I think we're, we are doing that tonight. But, um, I'm not, I'm, I'm not opposed to any, you know, additional conditions. I just, I'm not offering. I don't have anything to offer up.
Works have this too. Is at the very least we'd have to go through this.
I believe he does, but I will make sure.
So. So right now we're at a stalemate basically, because we need three commissioners to move forward with something. And we don't have that. Like nothing will happen with the way people are lined up right now.
Would you permit a motion on the table?
Not until, I don't think we're on the same page yet. So Commissioner Shorts, you're open to conditions, but you're open to just keeping it the same. So I guess what I need to hear from you is like, do you want to talk about more conditions or not?
Um, you all have, have my blessing to, I, I just, I, yeah, I'll go along with the process. I don't have a problem with that. Um, I just, I have no conditions to add. Um, and I, you know, I, I'd have to look at the list again. I don't, I didn't write it down.
But no, that's okay. Uh, Mr. Gager has it on.
Yeah. But, um.
Are you able to show that screen?
Uh, the, the spreadsheet.
Yes, please. That's okay.
Ensuring that Commissioner Schwartz has the revise.
Thank you. That's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, you know, no, I have, I, I have nothing to add to this or.
Did you want to say?
Or take away, I, you know, I, I think the staff and, uh, and, and the planning, um, planning staff and the planning board did a good job coming up with what they did, even though I know it's a five, four vote. But, um, I, I would have nothing to add and everything I'm seeing here, I don't know how you implement it anyway, but.
Well, Commissioner Shorts, just, just to be clear, like what we're, what we're talking about is some commissioners want to, it sounds like, not do the green hat thinking and go straight to a vote. And some commissioners want to do the green hat thinking and work through possible solutions. That's really where we're stuck, is do we want to either solutions or not?
That, that I'm looking to vote to vote.
So you're willing to vote right now?
Yeah, I yield.
So we have, we're ready for a motion then. There's three commissioners that are ready for a motion. Is that right? Are you ready for a motion, Vice Chair Hill?
Quickly go down the list.
Yes.
I got, let's just, maybe we don't get into the minutia, but quickly go down the list and say, we can mitigate, we can't, we can mitigate, we can't, right?
All right. Who wants to begin? Let's just read it out. I'm happy to do some lifting since I, first of all, thank you. I think we agreed to a process together where we do all of these hats and we try to talk about solutions. So thank you for honoring the thing that we agreed to.
So perhaps we just, if I may.
Sure.
Read each one out. And if a commissioner has a thought, then let's just say it.
Okay.
Okay, so can just move.
So, uh, let's have Mr. Gager read them out.
Okay.
If you could please.
Yeah, uh, uh, absolutely. Uh, number one is the, the concern was the traffic from the development.
So I would offer developments that are large trip generators should be fronting US ten to reduce negative traffic impacts to the internal parts of the development.
And so you think that they, they need to have their own way out?
No, I think that things that are going to bring in a lot of cars all the time should be nearest to the highway and not back in where there's going to be people walking and living, like to reduce the conflict between cars and humans. Like as a way to make it more walkable and safe. Anything else people would add? Okay, do you want to keep moving this through?
Absolutely. Uh, concern number two is the uncertain level of traffic impact. And that really stemmed from the, uh, I believe the variety of uses that are possible and highly commercialized.
Is there a way to balance uses through conditions for this?
Um, you, you know, typically when, um, the subdivision is approved within its zoning district, um, the, the allowable use table, the use matrix guides what, what can be, um, handled in that district. And so, um, you know, ru- removing items from the use table, um, to, to, to condition a subdivision is, is a little bit problematic.
Okay, so we should skip that one?
Which would also apply to number two.
It's not removing a use. Number two isn't removing.
Well, the way that, the way that sub, the way that putting a subdivided lot on the market works is someone decides whether or not to buy that lot. So once they buy that lot, then they have all of the buy right uses a- associated with the, with the zoning of that lot. So we're not, this is not a master plan development. This is a subdivision. And so there's no way that you could say, well, okay, now that you own that lot, oh, you, you want to do a, a large, a, a large trip generator, but you bought not by the highway. You, you can't move that lot. That only works if you're, if you're trying to master plan all of the lots at the same time.
Well, let's, you know, with all due respect, I'd like to check in and see, is this a possible condition or not?
Um, you know, I, I think that condition could be modified, um, to, to state that you, you know, to the extent possible, large trip generating activities, um, shall enter in off of, of US ten. Um, but certainly recognizing that, you know, as Commissioner Lyons pointed out, a, a high trip generating activity could end up on, on one of the interior lots. So, um, I, I think modifying the condition would be possible.
Okay, do you want to write it? Thank you.
Um, maybe instead of front would be, uh, access. A- and of course, just to be clear to the commission, um, we as a city do not control, um, access permits on state highways. That is controlled by MDT. And so, um, there, there is a, a process there.
Okay. So next on the list was.
Number three is potential impacts to downtown. And this was largely kind of in the, the economic realm and, and, uh, business effects.
I do think that developments impact downtowns. I've lived in enough places long enough to know that downtown, um, viability or vitality is complex and we are working on a downtown master plan. So I would love to make sure that that downtown master plan, and this is obviously sub, separate from any subdivision application, but I would love to make sure that the downtown master plan is really addressing, um, the real development pressures happening around Livingston and the county and how we keep our downtown vital and vibrant. Regardless of the subdivision or not, I think that it's something we should always be thinking about. So I don't, that's not really a condition, but that's like a thing I think we should make sure we talk to the contractors about. Maybe this is another column. Make sure that the contractors for the downtown master plan are considering the growth of Livingston and how to keep the downtown vital and vibrant and like people moving into the downtown to support the economy of the downtown. Is there anything other commissioners would add? About downtown?
I'm not sure if there's a way that we can, at this point.
Right.
A condition that would mitigate the impacts of downtown.
Right.
Okay. And, and so what I'll do is, is, uh, when a condition comes up that affects one of those, um, one of those challenges with the site, I will, I will strike it out. But in, in the case of, uh, two and three, where, you know, we were unable to come up with a condition, I, I just will leave it unstruck. If, if that works for the commission. So, um, uh, challenge number four is the uncertainty of the development pattern given the allowed uses.
Chair News.
Yeah, Commissioner Alliance?
Uh, this is a, a process question. I, I don't feel comfortable with the traffic from development being struck out from, uh, the, the, where possible, put the trip, the large ones by US ten. Because what, what I heard of, of what that was addressing in your mind was traffic within the development. That had, actually had nothing to do with my concern about traffic whatsoever. It was traffic to the external street, the streets.
Sure.
Um, and so I don't feel like, one, I don't think that that's possible. And then two, I don't think that if that were possible, it would, um, uh, have any meaningful impact on.
It's fine. You can then strike it out. Number four, uncertainty of development pattern uses.
Because this is not a master plan, right? We can't ask that they put commercial with commercial and residential with residential as, you know, Mel had talked about, you know, he, he sees that as an area potentially where there would be housing around those two large businesses. But we can't, we can't make that happen with this development. We can't say that that's what's going to happen. We have no say over that. And I don't know that there's a condition that we can do to, to mitigate that uncertainty of development pattern because we can't, as far as I know, can we condition that within this plat that they would say that, you know, lots, one through five are commercial and six through eight are, would be residential and nine through 10 would be light industrial and the rest would be, um, heavy, you know, heavy industrial. We don't have the ability to do that. And I think that that's what's important to think about, right, is with the way that this, this development is or this plat, we have no say over it. So we could hope for as much housing as we want and cross our fingers and hope it's going to happen. But it's up to the market to decide and we don't, as far as I'm aware, we can't make a condition to make this more of something.
A- 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 as recently discussed, um, yes, the, the, the city's use matrix list of allowable uses really dictates what, what can occur within subdivision. However, um, recognizing that, that the highway commercial zone is, is very generous and the, the different allowed uses um, in the, the pre-development phase, pre-application phase, uh, of this project. Um, staff did, uh, spend some time with the applicants and, um, it, you'll note on, on. Um, it, you'll note on, on page four hundred and twenty-four of the packet in the summary of covenants, um, there, there is one that is. A deep bullet down, uh, which states where there is a common border between a commercial use and a residential use. A landscape feature such as a road, trees or landscape, then it must be installed to provide a graceful transition between these types. And so, you know, I, I think at staff level, we do recognize that, that there are a lot of various uses allowed in highway commercial, and so. Um, I, I, I know the applicant put forward this as, as one possible alternative to address some of the concerns that are raised.
In the summary of covenants, I guess I'll ask this now. Is this an example of what it could be, or this, these are for shores?
Um, so, uh, th- these are, uh, intended covenants, um, that, that the, the applicant has put forward, which is my understanding, so.
Should we keep looking through our list?
Okay, so, uh, challenge number five, uh, stated is the impact to wetlands.
So I believe somebody referenced the public comment about wetlands. When that came up, right?
Mm-hmm.
Those. So I talked to the person who submitted the comment, and she had said that, um, she actually had not read the subdivision application. But she was just pointing out things that we should be thinking about for the subdivision. Um, as we review it. So, she gave me feedback, and then, um, during our site visit. There were staff there that actually work on. Stormwater. And how we deal with stormwater as city, and also the interaction between that and the wetlands. Uh, if it's appropriate, Mr. Gager, I. I think that. Staff could do a better job responding to whether or not there's impact to the wetlands than I could since. She's an engineer, um. Yeah, I would, I would, I guess, ask for that. Consideration.
Uh, a- a- absolutely, um, before I invite Martha, uh. O'Rourke from our Public Works Department, she is the city, uh, project manager, and, and she is a, uh, licensed professional engineer in the state of Montana. Um, but before I invite her to, and I commented a bit on the, the stormwater system, um, I, I may offer that. Um, relative to those comments that, that, that were, were put in by, you remember, um, ju- just as a point of clarification. The, um, the, the Property Owners Association, um, is, is proposed to retain ownership. Of the, the permanent stormwater facility, and so the, the liability issue, um, that was noted in that, that comment is, is in part mitigated. Um, by, by the ownership structure. Um, but, uh, Martha, if, if you're available to, uh, to come off mute and, um, a- and share with us. Uh, some of, of, of what Chair Newt's requested, and that is specifically, um, how, how, how you see the stormwater system as proposed, uh, impacting the wetlands.
Sure. Hi, my name is Martha. I'm the project manager for the City of Livingston Public Works Department. Um, so the way this subdivision is proposed with stormwater. I'm sorry, my children are having a hard time falling asleep. Just, just one moment. Oh, go ahead, go back to bed, please.
Like, a million times happy to hold.
So, so sorry. So sorry.
Martha, you don't need to be sorry for being a mom who's also an engineer, first of all. I wanna invite that maybe we go to the next thing and come back to Martha, so she can tend. Do you need to tend to your babies, cuz we can come back to you?
They're gonna have a hard time for a while, so I'll, I'll try to make this quick. Um, I'm sorry. The, so the, the stormwater proposed for this subdivision is to take into account effects of. The increased hardscape from roads and sidewalks just for the. The road itself. Every single development that happens on each lot will have to look at its own stormwater impacts. So the proposed detention and retention ponds are going to mitigate any impacts. That then the, the proposed road is going to have on the wetlands. And they will. Prevent increased runoff from damaging the wetlands if, if that makes sense. So, the way our design standards and are written is, um, to meet DEQ standards. Sorry. And, and that's a, that's how we, that's how we look at them when we review them. So, when we review the subdivision, we review it. Just for the road's impact, so when each lot goes to develop, we'll have, those lots have to follow the same stormwater standards. And meet our design standards and DEQ standards. So, I hope that helps a little bit.
Yes.
Thank you, Martha. I appreciate it.
And, Martha, like, I can't tell you how many times I've been running a meeting during the pandemic and had to like go off screen. Because I had to like also be a mother at the same time as I was chairing the commission, so. Please don't ever apologize for being a whole person with children, like, we. We accept you as you, uh, we accept you fully as you are and your children, so, thank you. Um, the other thing I would add that was really interesting and helpful. For any subdivision was knowing that all of the standards for stormwater are, were meeting MS four requirements currently. If that's, I know that's of interest to some commissioners, because that's gonna be a critical mark when Livingston grows. And so it's a relief to hear that staff is thinking forward about making sure we're meeting those standards for new subdivisions. Um. Yeah, where's our lists? Sorry, I was thinking I needed another window open, but it was not my agency resource. So. I would. I guess, from my perspective, the impacts to wetlands, I am very concerned about impact to the wetlands, and it sounds like. Staff has considered the impact to the wetlands and it's. Designed such that. The wetlands shouldn't be impacted, and if they are, the letter that came into us was making sure that the city wouldn't be, um. The city wouldn't be responsible for negative impacts to the wetlands, because if they're subject to the Clean Water Act, that the penalties could be. Noteworthy, but it, it will be the Property Owner Association that is in charge of the wetlands and any im- negative impacts that potentially would happen. I don't know that there's anything to condition, because I think that it was taken care of as much as it could be by staff before it came to us. Is there anything other people would add? Um, yeah.
Uh, you know, i- i- if I may, Chair Newt, I, I would just offer that, um, existing condition number eight on page sixty-seven of the packet states. Stormwater design will meet applicable DEQ standards. The Property Owners Association must maintain ownership and maintenance responsibilities for stormwater facilities once constructed, and so. Um, in, in, in some regards, we do have, uh, an existing condition, um, that. Uh, covers this area. I will note that the applicants, um, a- as I noted, they, uh, requested modifications to, um, certain. Uh, certain proposed conditions, um, and, and they had actually requested, um, a, a slight modification to this. Um, to in, include the word public, and so they, they've requested that the, um, the existing or proposed condition number eight. Be modified to state that stormwater design will meet all applicable DEQ standards. The Property Owners Association must maintain ownership and maintenance responsibilities for. Public stormwater facilities once constructed, and the, the addition of the word public, um, really, I think, hits to, uh, the point that Ms. O'Rourke. Brought up earlier that, um, each lot does have the requirement to, uh, manage its own stormwater. Um, uh, retain its own stormwater, and so, um, what, what we're talking about here really is the. Public stormwater system that again, as Ms. O'Rourke pointed out, um, manages stormwater on, on the, the hardscape and in the right of way, uh, that is sitting up. So.
Okay, thank you for that. Other commissioners? Otherwise, we can keep moving on. Are you satisfied with the condition and the change? For public, knowing that the private. Lots would be mitigated on site. Or retained on site, rather. I mean, I think it's clarity, I think that was implied, but now it's just. More precise.
A- and so, just a confirmation with the commission, um, shall I strike through? Concern or, or challenge number five, impact to wetlands? Do we feel that that's been adequately, um, mitigated by the, the existing condition, or, or would we do like to keep that?
Believe more than one of us identified wetlands, so. Do you feel that it's, I feel that it's as satisfactory as it can be. At this time, I mean. I'm just looking at the list for something else. Any other commissioners? Cuz I'd like to keep moving forward, so we need like confirmation or not, so we can keep moving through the list.
As satisfactory as can be.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean. I prefaced this whole thing by saying. The annexation and the zoning. And the development, so yes. Um. All right.
Uh, yes, item number six is, uh, impact, uh, to disaster response, and there were concerns about, um, uh, evacuation.
Yeah, I feel like we touched on this also, when, I don't know if you had this conversation also with the chief when you were out on the property, but I feel like we talked quite a lot about. Worst-case scenarios in Livingston and what the city's plans were, um. So, Mr. Gager, I don't know if it would be appropriate to hear from the city on. Um. You know, how, how the city would respond in a worst-case scenario for proposed subdivision like this, or develop such a subdivision like this.
Um, yeah, a- a- absolutely, uh, I, I, and invite our fire chief, uh, Chavolowski, if, if he has any, um. Thoughts on, on, uh, evacuation, um, and, and specifically with, with regard to this site and, and. Uh, Chief, how, how you might handle, uh, the question formally was, was how you might, uh, handle evacuation of, of the site and, and some considerations that. That may come into play if I heard it correctly.
Right, with the. Two limited access points, and if the interstate was closed and the. There was a lot of traffic on US ten, I believe is what Vice Chair Kale was saying, how would. The city be prepared to respond?
Okay, Chief, did you get that?
Yes, good evening. Josh Chavolowski, City Fire Chief. Hmm, um, that's an interesting question that you posed, um. Looking at the dynamic of the city and how things are configured and what our response capabilities are. Um, we've done a lot of in-depth work in researching every aspect of the city and surrounding areas within the Five Mile Donut. Of what our response capabilities could be, and for this particular area. Um, it would really have to be a absolute catastrophic situation where. I ninety was shut down, I ten was shut down, frontage road was shut down. Those are the primary ingress, egress areas for that particular neighborhood. But as it stands right now, with the crosswind through the valley, uh, the Ventura effect pushing wind. From west to east naturally through this corridor, um, and the abundance of hazardous materials that are run on our rail line plus. I ninety as an interstate, US interstate, um, there's a lot of complications and a lot of, uh, hazards that are posed. So your question is completely valid in thinking that this may. Potentially propose an issue in the future, but I would say that neighborhood is actually in the best spot for the entire city. As far as evacuation, ingress, egress routes, it sits on the edge of the city and it sits at the head of the wind tunnel effect. So if there is a rail incident or a highway incident, we do have multiple ingress, egress routes using frontage road, um, I ten. Going eastbound and I ninety, depending on the corridor shutdown of what the natural progression would be of the incident and the gravity of it. But we do have multiple choices, um, not to pick an old scab, but, and if we had an, an overpass, uh, over the rail, that would add a fourth option. Um, which would be ideal, um, in, in evac for that entire area, but I don't have any specific concerns for that area. In fact, that's, that area, that particular area is one of the areas that I am least concerned about as far as an evacuation route. Possibility or closure or issue, um, at a later time. There are other areas of the city which are, would be more impacted. If there was an issue with anything related to a, a massive release or leak or catastrophic incident.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate your time this evening.
Yes, sir. Um, if you would like, I can kinda touch on item nine, which is fire as well, just to kinda knock that out, as long as I'm on, if you want.
Can we wait until we get to that point, just cuz we're checking for.
Yeah, yeah, and Chief, if you don't mind holding tight, I do recognize that, that you just got off shift and are having dinner, um, so, uh, we, we've got a couple of items before we get back to you, if, uh, if that helps.
No problem, I'll stand by. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
I don't think that's my question, but.
What do you think? Do you wanna clarify your question?
He, I mean, and, and I think, you know, we're talking, we have evacuation, but I'm still confused as to how. In an event, when the truck is backed up on I ten. The fire truck is getting there.
So, um, I, I would offer, uh, and, and, um, I don't mean to speak for the chief, I, this was an item that we, we did cover the other day, and. And, uh, a, an interesting analogy that, that the chief offered was that, um. Uh, during last summer's flood, uh, a- as you know, the, the Veterans Bridge, uh, over, over the Yellowstone was, was impassable for, for. Number of hours, and so actually, uh, both of our, our police fire, uh, and EMS crews, uh, utilized Interstate ninety. Um, to, to move patients between, um, the, the east end and, and downtown, uh, and to access the hospital and. In that way, and so, um, you know, quite honestly, if, if there were an obstruction on, on US ten, um, somewhere would happen on eighty-nine, I would expect that we would use. Uh, Interstate ninety to, uh, to access that site, and so, um, you know, I, I think, as the chief said, outside of the, the road closure of both US ten and Interstate ninety. Uh, I think that he has the ability to, to serve that area.
Yeah, one thing that I learned when I was listening to them is when they have problems getting places, they sometimes. Make access. Probably wouldn't have the ability to do. So, where there aren't roads, they, in an emergency. Staff is equipped. To be able to make things passable that wouldn't be passable to the average person in a vehicle. And I, I, like, that's a thing that. I had not considered, and so I'm not sure they're gonna. Tell all the ways that they do that, but. There were some specific examples that were shared.
You know, I, I'd be happy to elaborate, and you know, quite honestly, um. The, the, the chief made mention, and, and we've talked earlier tonight about, uh, the historic crossing project that had been contemplated. Um, just, just across from, from this, um, a- and so, you know, quite honestly, if, if there's an evacuation situation, whether it's coming out of the Discovery Vista area. Or it's coming out of this area, um, you know, there, there is the ability for, for us to build a temporary roadway over the, the railroad tracks that. You know, could bring people south out of Discovery Vista, south and west out of Discovery Vista, or it could bring folks to north out of, of this subdivision. And so, um, you know, in, in the absolutely rare event that US ten and, and Interstate ninety were closed, there are. As Chair Newt's pointed out, there are, uh, the abilities for city staff, both in public works and fire, to, to build temporary roadways.
We can move on, but, um, uh, just for the record, Sam is still concerned.
Okay. Um. Can we just please keep moving through to try to?
Absolutely. Uh, item seven is compliance with subdivision regulations, and I believe this, um, relates to the item that Commissioner Lyons had. Um, noted about, about the block configurations.
Men and Chair.
We're not taking public comment right now.
There is a thing called a walking quorum. Was the public part of this? Vision, this.
Patricia, I already said that we were not doing a quorum, that we were doing site visits. And.
It's called a walking.
There was no walking quorum. We were monitored by staff the whole time, and we weren't having conversations with each other, but we can't do public comment right now, we really need. We were monitored by staff the whole time and we weren't having conversations with each other, but we can't do public comment right now. We really need to work through this list. And I'm happy to talk about process with you after the meeting. But there was no walking meeting and no walking forum. Um, so the next is. Um, are we on seven?
We are absolutely, the compliance with subdivision regulations and and if. The the section has been read several times tonight, so I'm happy to read it again.
I don't think we need to read it again, do we? So should we move on to number eight?
Uh, if if that pleases the commission, absolutely. Um, item eight, or there were noted concerns with compliance with the growth policy and specifically with regard to. Uh, the classification of this as as infill, um, several.
No, I'm sorry, I I do want to address something with the subdivision regulations block configuration. I. Don't want the commission to be in the, excuse me. I don't want the commission, future commissions or this commission to always be in the situation where. Um, plots are being developed in a way where they're out of compliance when they come in front of us later. Is there a way to improve process so that when people are starting to? Get approvals that are administrative? That we can make sure that they're not putting themselves out of compliance with future process?
Um, a- a- absolutely, Chair Noots, and it's a a fair point, and I, as I mentioned earlier. The the initial development on uh i- in this site that affects current layout did occur. Um, prior to the the current site plan review process and. Um, a- and that site plan review process is more robust than um what existed at the time. Uh, a- and so, um, yes, uh, please know that that when staff works through this, the site plan review process. On uh a small portion of a larger parcel, um, we will work with the applicants. Um, to ensure that whatever work they are doing contemplates compliance with um. City subdivision regulations and growth policy a- and other documents um for future.
Great. I think that's really important to make sure that. There's not loopholes that we find ourselves in this situation over and over. Since this is two for two, the last two subdivisions that have been before us, I believe. Um. Okay, sorry, I interrupted you, so compliance with growth policy and then there's a list.
Uh, a- absolutely, the specific mention was made of the the classification and whether this is infill. Um, compliance with smart growth policies, um, and and then also strategies that. That call for development to occur in existing communities, um, uh, to enhance air and water quality. To support existing local businesses and to uh maintain uh gateways that celebrate local character.
Commissioners, anything you would offer?
The only thing that I would offer on any of this would be that. That the subdivision would be under, um. Would be subject to any gateway overlay zones like up went to place.
Thank you.
Um, do do we feel that that possible condition as stated is um. Satisfactory to to mitigate a portion of this?
I think a portion, I agree with Commissioner Lyons about the definition of definition of infill that it gets misused as a talking point. Um, I agree with Commissioner Lyons about that. And that there's no way to, I don't think there's a way to mitigate that, given the. Situation we find ourselves in.
So a possible partial strike through?
I think so. Um. I think the support the existing local businesses, I think that some of that could happen if we're really intentional with the downtown master plan. I think our downtown deserves attention all the time, not just with one subdivision application, but. We should be thinking about all the ways to support downtown all the time. So I would say the support the existing local businesses could be partially. Minigated if we do a really great job with the downtown master plan.
But I would say all the other areas up there from the growth policy that are listed, I don't know how we mitigate any of those.
I also think there's things with the growth policy that support it, even if we. That's an uncomfortable thought, like the future land use map, so. I think we find ourselves in a situation where the growth policy is. Um, it's complicated because this. Started being developed before we had the most recent regulations in place and before we had this growth policy. So there's going to be inherent problems or conflicts. Should we move on to the next one? Fire list. Are you all ready? Keep moving. Pressure shorts, you still with us? Okay. Um. Now, the chief. I believe this is the one that he wanted to offer something on.
Absolutely, uh, Chief Chavolowski, are you, are you still with us?
Yes, sir, I'm still here.
All right, so the uh, the I I think the question to you uh relates to a a little bit. Fire resistance and fire resilience, um, a- and any thoughts that you you might have in that regard?
Sure, absolutely, uh, the development of this neighborhood. Um, is going to actually reduce the fire threat in that area, the more hardscape, more industrialization. The more fire resistant construction we put up, um, streets, sidewalks, parking lots, everything else. Is going to reduce the the natural fuel load which exists there currently. The current status of that neighborhood is more of a fire risk than if we continue to develop it and allow development to occur. Where hard structures are going up with fire protection systems and not to mention Public Works has done an amazing job. Um, ensuring that water lines are installed and there is a natural water supply from. Our facilities that offers uh substantial water flows and fire protection flows in that area with ample hydrants at. Prime locations and key locations, so we can combat any kind of fire hazards that may exist. Um, as far as natural. Uh, wildland interface, uh, the urban interface there at that location. It's actually a very decreased area once it becomes developed. Um, the highway would be the only area, the the small fringe gap between the highway and that neighborhood would be the only area of concern. From my perspective, um, at this point, because it's surrounded on three sides by hardscape after its development occurs. Um, and everything that exists there would be protected amply by our facility or our resources. And our fire apparatus and our staff. Um, I don't really have a concern as far as fire wildland interface. Um, in that area and all of the buildings that do go in would be subject to fire code compliance under the International Fire Code. To um have proper fire protection systems installed, sprinkler systems, alarm systems, everything else, early activation systems. So we would be able to handle anything that comes up there as far as wildland. And I definitely apologize that I didn't convey my answer earlier, um, or the other areas um for evacuation, but I think that it. Um, it must be said that the that area is the least concerning for the entire city. If there is an evac required for the entire city or that area, that is the least concerning because they do have multiple. Avenues of escape and Mr. Gager, you are absolutely correct that we would utilize I ninety as best possible. And that could work in favor of fire resistance and resilience as well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Might we see the spreadsheet again?
Absolutely.
I would offer um a few things that the chief and I talked about. When I met with him. Um, that he did confirm also would be reducing the chance of fire and that's um requiring fire breaks. Uh, native plants are more fire resistant. And fire resistant building materials. So I would offer those as. Things to put on this list. And I think. We've seen examples in many of the fires, like you were mentioning, like really catastrophic fires that have happened around the country, that difference that. Some preventative measures can. The difference it can make to save people's property and lives and like really horrible circumstances. Um, anything else people would want to add? Otherwise, I'd like to keep working through the list. Commissioner Lyons?
Go.
Okay. Pressure shorts, keep going. Okay.
Okay, uh, so this brings us, uh, we we previously discussed item number ten, the lack of sidewalks specifically and and uh areas lots three through five and. Um, of the existing uh de- development that's out there at printing for less and the gravel. Um, there, uh, so item number seven, related to the observed uh water condition in the future right of way. Uh, of of.
Can we stop for a second because we didn't, like, we said install, who who is installing that? Is that? Is that the applicant? Or are we still waiting for the developer for each lot to develop to put the sidewalk in? Because if we're doing that, it doesn't mitigate the issue.
Right, so is there a way to have it done before it's all developed, so we don't end up with like a hopscotch of. Sidewalks and undeveloped land, that's, it makes it unwalkable for the vision that Commissioner Freeman was talking about.
A- 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 absolutely, if if those could condition the replacement of sidewalks. Um, at at the outset, um, you know, of of subdivision, I might offer. Um, in conversations with with the planning director over the last day or so that. Um, you know, the uh lack of sidewalks and pedestrian access becomes more of an issue as development occurs. In subdivision, because at at present, there's, there's very few, you know, business activities that would draw folks out and so. You you know, one um, one creative solution that that the planning director and I came up with would be. Um, you know, to to possibly have a trigger point where, you know, if. Half of the lots have been sold and developed and sidewalks installed, that that perhaps at that point. May require the the property owners association, the applicant or the developer to complete the the remaining sidewalks, to fill in the sidewalks and and eliminate those gaps that. May have been created through, uh, you know. Sporadic development, for lack of a better term, um, so something for you folks to consider, there is certainly the. The ability to require the applicant to install all sidewalks initially, or um, you know, when we hit a certain trigger point to do anything that's undone.
What do you think?
I think they need to be installed.
All installed initially, yeah. You're in objection? All installed.
Okay.
On onset.
So I'm going to modify this, um, the p- p- proposed condition number one, thank you.
And so, not just on lots three through five, but throughout the whole, thank you.
Or as the streets are created, so let's say that, does that make sense, Mr. Gager, because right now, part of those streets aren't.
Right.
Through the street, there's sidewalk.
What about existing streets, because like all the analog drive is already.
Yeah, yeah.
So what, what do we do there?
So they need to put in the sidewalks.
Yeah, if there's a street, there's sidewalk. So if they're not there, they need to be put in.
Okay. Should we keep moving forward? Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so the next one, I think, was eleven.
That's correct.
So Vice Chair Kell mentioned the water was in the right of way on the. PFL way extension street and um, I believe. Please correct me if I'm wrong, that she said she was concerned about the city having to pay to constantly repair infrastructure that was. Damaged by water. Is the street maintenance on the city or is it on the property owners association?
Uh, so maintenance of the public right of way is uh falls to the responsibility of the city. Um, though I may offer that our roadway design standards um do uh deal with water in the right of way and and mitigation of of that. Um, and we do have, you know, road construction standards and road design standards, so. W- w- water and future right of ways is is not uncommon, um, and and so I I I do believe that the city has. The ability to to manage this through our existing standards.
So the standards would address Vice Chair Kell's concern?
It it is my belief, I'm happy to to check in with Public Works folks, um, although this was the the conversation that we really had out there last week.
Do you want him to check in with the public works folks while we're here?
Fine.
Do you want to keep going?
Yep.
Um, may may that one be? Struck or is that uh something you'd like to?
I'll defer to you because this was yours.
You can strike it, I saw some concerns, but.
Number twelve.
Absolutely, uh, n- number twelve related to uh construction costs of uh of of both the water loop specifically was primary, but then also. Um, a- a- and he needed um sewer infrastructure and um that, a- as I believe I noted earlier. Um, the the costs of the water loop at this point are unknown because it has not been designed, the route has not been selected and so. Um, a- you know, while it is unlikely that the impact fees from the from the subdivision would. Um, a- afford the construction of the loop or any um possible sewer upsides and it may uh need to occur. Um, the the waiver of protest for SID creation, special improvement district creation. Um, does provide uh additional resources to construct the the necessary infrastructure. And and I I would also point out there that the construction of the water loop is not um. Apparently necessary at this point, um, given the the proposed, you know, or or forecast level of of development here. Um, it it really is, it comes at a certain point in the future when the the level of water depend uh exceeds our our ability to to force feed the line.
Well, we don't know what the development is, so that could change. Um. I'm, I I would still be concerned that it would. Make some in the city think that we need to push development to the west and I don't, I'm not happy with that, so.
Right, I think, um. This water loop. Connection is. Really important how we do it and where it goes. Um, because it certainly would. Depending where, you know, it's been proposed to be in lots of places and depend depending on where it goes, it could incentivize development in places that. Are in direct conflict with our growth policy in a significant way. I would ask that when the conversation happens about the water loop that. We're having that conversation at the commission level. Um, because it does seem like a policy conversation where to place some of this infrastructure, given. The implications of this kind of infrastructure and the proximity of like. What is or is not near the proposed locations? Yeah, that's another one of those that's, I don't know that we can over comment. Um, but I certainly would want a robust. Public conversation about the reality of our options.
Uh, a- a- absolutely, and I I would offer that the uh, the the design of the water loop. Um, and and any contract for that will exceed my my um purchase authority that you folks have delegated to me and so. Uh, that that contract will come back to you folks, you will have an opportunity to review the scope of work. And um, and and certainly your uh y- your comments on um, the the policy implications of the place where you the water loop have not fallen on deaf ears.
Thank you. Should we keep moving, yeah?
Okay, number thirteen, uh, challenges that the initial development uh constricts the remaining um development.
Yeah, I guess I just would like to know for certain, I guess you've already said that the site. Um, the site plan review with the executive branch. Um. Would help prevent us from being in this kind of situation again. I mean, I think that's all we can do. I mean, I think that's all we can do. There's no overcoming it for this property. And you know, if there's any updates we could do to make it. Um, easier for staff to. And act like the will of the commission, that would be great.
Uh, yes, Chair Nudes, you didn't solicit my feedback, but please know that we have had conversations internally, uh, regarding the. The current site plan review process and, and I think, um, internally, we all agree that there are some improvements that, that could be made to that process and. Uh, we will be working on that.
Thank you. Anything else commissioners on this one? We keep going.
Okay, uh, challenge number four is the, the annexation pattern of the past, the lollipop.
I wish there was a way to overcome that, there's not.
Could just annex everything.
What'd you say?
Could annex everything in between, that's the way to, that's, that's how you solve that. And the inevitable outcome.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support putting that on there. If other commissioners want to support that pathboard, they can say so, but I'm not interested in that. I think that's in violation of most of our annexation policy. So should we just keep moving forward?
Okay, uh, number fifteen, the zoning change from light industrial to highway commercial, um, somewhat similar.
Yeah, I don't think that there's anything that we can do.
Um, uh, number sixteen, uh, the challenge is the, the future land use map. Um, and, and just that it's noted as, uh, commercial and, and not LI or, uh, another use.
I guess like the next time we do a growth policy update, we should really spend time on that future land use map, next go around and. Um, have more conversations about. Um, allowed uses and impacts from allowed uses. But I guess that would be, you know, in the second column, like that would be a to do in however many years we restart that process.
Uh, okay.
Do you mind putting it over there in that? Yeah, just like that we, when next time we do the. Growth policy, we reexamine the future land use map considering allowed uses in zones. Thank you.
Uh, so now, um, to resume, uh, i- item number seventeen, uh, one of the challenges, the existence of infrastructure. If, if there's no comments to that, uh, number, uh, eighteen, um, uh, the, uh. There was a note about incompatible, uh, adjacent uses and the, the limited tools available there. Um, a- and then I, I guess I would offer, um, without stifling your, your compensation, just the. Reiteration of the, of the eights, um, uh, of the eighth covenant that, that talks about the borders. Um, between, between residential and commercial leases.
For these firms, another thing.
Uh, yeah, exactly, there's, um, mention of, of tree root.
I guess I would. Suggest we edit that. Through between all differing uses. Cause I can imagine a commercial next to something that's more industrial that might not want. It might not be good for the business. And then I want to make sure that it's, um, that native landscaping, so it's fire, like, just making sure that it complies with the native. Plants, so that it's fire resistant, if there's. Plantings as a way to create the border. Other commissioners, anything you would add to that? Let's see what we have.
Uh, number nineteen, no public access road to open space lot twenty-four.
Yeah, I think we should require a public access road, the open space lot twenty, was it twenty-four or twenty-one? Twenty-one.
Sorry.
That's okay.
The one in the forward next to each other of attention.
Yeah, and then I believe that's permitted in the, uh. Our parkland dedication resolution. But that's something the commission can require.
Um. Yes, um, ordinance two zero six nine, which relates to parkland dedication. Uh, modifying ordinance one nine E two, on, um, page two of that ordinance. Um, section three, um, uh, and I will quote, in part states, the governing body. May require that the developer construct a trail leading into the park or common area.
I would add that.
Do you know that that sufficiently addresses item nineteen and can be struck?
Yeah.
Thank you, uh, item twenty, uh, is a lack of a wildlife corridor.
Right.
Related to the FWP.
So if we look at the subdivision map. One of the suggestions, are you able to pull this? Thank you. So one of the recommendations from the Fish Wildlife Park was to maintain a corridor for wildlife to move through. Across open spaces. Um, it looks like lot number one is going to be reserved as a retention pond. So I would propose that lot twenty-four remains undeveloped so that there's a corridor. That connects the two open spaces so that wildlife can move. Across subdivision per the request of FWP.
Where is lot twenty-four?
Um.
Um, I will.
So this would be the corridor.
Oh, I understand that that's lot one, yeah.
So I will, um, enter that, uh, lot twenty-four. Be retained as a, as open space for a wildlife corridor. So.
It's okay.
Um.
I think the next one's no community postal box unit. I think the USPS had a very specific suggestion about having a clustered box that was. Was it like accessible and bolted to the ground or something like, whatever the USPS suggestion was, I think it should be a condition. It seems pretty straightforward.
Uh, which brings us to number twenty-two, uh, that there is no proposed mitigation of noise or.
I'll offer that since that was mine also, um, I think that residential. Buildings. And commercial buildings shall be built to withstand wind, have insulated windows and noise reducing windows. And building materials. And that is a health and safety concern, noises, there's measured impacts of noise on people. That's why I would add commercial also, because people are going to be working there all day potentially. They should also be protected from those impacts.
Sorry, I missed her, you didn't hear the commercial.
That's okay.
Um, which brings us to number twenty-three, um, public health and safety, um. Impacts from traffic within the development. And, gosh, proposed condition number one sure feels like it.
Yeah, I think we already covered that.
Okay. Uh, which, uh, not to rush it, please stop me if I'm moving too quickly here, but, uh, item number four, no bus pullout locations.
I think a health and safety concern is if we're talking about people living out here, we need. To have places that are safe for children to load and unload from, in all people, not just children, but. We talk a lot about kids because kids are the ones that can't drive. Um, or at least some of the population that can't drive, and there's no pullouts proposed on this. Which means people are going to be loading in the street, um. There's certainly a couple people on this side of the table that know more about transportation than I do, um, I. Let's see, I think that they proposed the sites. Based on my bus riding experience in my life that. I don't know that these are the best site locations, um. I guess it, it'd be nice, we don't know how many, we don't know how many people are going to be here for the reasons already stated. Cause the variability of potential development. But perhaps the two spots could be, maybe there could be like two spots and they could be opposite of each other. As opposed to having. One, two, three, four, five pullouts throughout the subdivision. Um, let's see. I think. The opposite sides of the subdivision might be the one that Vice Chair Kail, the first one that she noted was the place where there's no sidewalks. So sort of the top center.
Hmm.
Like three through five between those two. Access points might make sense and then like just opposite that, does that? Seem reasonable for people that know more about transportation than me?
So the, what that will require is a, is a wider right of way. And particularly those lots three through five are, are probably the highest value. Real estate lots for them and that's what they're, they're after, so that like, we're going to be asking like to cut down. On the square footage of lots up there from their highest value, I don't know if that's something that they're going to be willing to do. And that's kind of like a discussion of. Like a reworking of the plat, which I'm not sure how, um, on the table that kind of discussions right now.
Yeah, we'll find out. Mister Gager.
Uh, certainly, I think there's a, a conversation to be had there, I might offer just. Thinking on the fly a little bit constructively, there may be an opportunity just in, in, in light of the, the commissioner's concerns. Um, there, there, there may be an opportunity to use lot eleven, which is, uh, currently a dedicated stormwater area, perhaps a portion of that along the frontage. That's not, um, next to the, the detention pond might be, uh, an opportunity, um. You, you know, but to, to achieve Chair Nudes' goal there of, of having them across from each other, you know, that would. Kind of put a natural another stop, um, you know, kind of over by that, that lot to the, the dedicated parkland. Open space which.
Mm-hmm.
You know, may or may not have tremendous utility.
Lot two.
Uh, yeah, and I was just going directly across from lot eleven.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, that's like the backside of PFL though.
Yeah.
I don't feel like that's like a place where people are going to be loading and unloading, I mean, that's like.
No.
There's like trucks that go there, so I don't know that that's like a great space where people are going to be wanting to hang out behind PFL, um.
And there may be some opportunity by lot twenty where we talked about having a, uh, pedestrian access.
That might make for some commissioners, for sure lines, does that seem more appropriate to you?
Which was the final, um, I heard eleven and then two and then I missed the.
He's, so he said eleven, I said I don't think two makes much sense, because it's like.
I actually don't see two.
Two is, um, open space, that larger open space, so if you. If you go there in person, that's like the backside of PFL, like where trucks and the loading dock are, so I don't know if that's a great place for. A bus stop, but Mister Gager was suggesting perhaps where we would require, uh. Trail to connect to the open space on the north side of lot twenty, that that might be a suitable location for a pullout. Because it's next to that open space trail.
So it would ju- it would be eleven and that or just that?
Or eleven, well, I'm talking about just for pullouts that are dedicated so that the bus is off of the street when kids load in or whoever loads and unloads.
But you're saying eleven and twenty?
Yeah, I mean, presumably if it's like really popular and there's lots of bus transportation, I can imagine a scenario where there's more stops. But that would not be a, I mean, that's a decision for the people that drive the buses. Do those seem more suitable to you?
I think they seem more likely to be, uh, amenable to the developer. I think, I think your original idea would be the best place for it, and I think it'll be hard to compel. The developer to want to give up that real estate. So, and my, my comment on that, on your first suggestion was not that that's. Not a good spot, that would be a great spot.
Well then, are you open to doing the first spot and hoping that we have developers that want to collaborate with us?
Sure.
And see what happens?
Sure.
Won't know unless we ask.
Yeah.
Alright, so can we go with the first one first?
Yeah, absolutely.
There's one, that, two, so up here, yeah, and then down at twenty. I think that's.
I think I heard you say anywhere from fifteen to twenty, kind of up your range, like three to five.
Yeah, like I think sixteen, twenty, somewhere down there. How are we through this list yet? Is there anything?
Uh, we are, we are close to through the list, there, there are just two or three more items. I apologize, I need to make the bit slower or bit smaller here. Well, uh, go all the way to the bottom here. Uh, so number twenty-five was related to the parkland developments.
Thank you, um, let's see. I. So. This is the resolution on Parkland, I have a resolution somewhere around here, resolution two zero six nine. This is the one that we talked about before, um. I might need your help remembering where this is, Mister Gager, but I believe there's a way that the commission can. Require that, um. This com- there's a compliant trail that's based on a public process or community input, so I'm thinking about, um. How our public here in Livingston likes to. As they should. Um, participate in the future of parklands. And I think. Our Parkland. Resolution. Allows us to make this kind of condition. Can you help me on?
Uh, yeah, it, it's on, uh, page two at the bottom, the last sentence of, uh, of section three.
So is there a way to have that public process for what the community wants? I mean, I know we have that one trail that we already mentioned, but like. In terms of, um. that we already mentioned, but like in terms of um accessing the other. There's been a lot of conversation about what might be possible on lot two. But that would be a conversation for the public to really tell us what they want.
Yeah, yeah, and 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 so, you know, I I I think a a possible condition may be that um, the applicant uh shall work with uh the city and community to uh vision and construct a trail leading into lot two.
Okay, who already have that, or do we just need to modify something we already have?
I. So we could modify six, uh, which deals with that. Okay, um. Now, uh, that was that item. Sorry. Uh, apologizing.
You're testing your Excel skills.
Uh, I think I might have reached the limits of expansion there, um, but luckily, uh, number twenty six is um the the uh compliance or or conflict with between covenants and Livingston Municipal Code. And specifically um items related to pets uh and and others were were entered by the commission.
Yeah, um.
Uh, ABUs, pets and building standards.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of covenants that are more prescriptive than local code. So I would say that um we have building codes and design standards and ordinances around animals and that they must go by ours.
Okay.
However, you would say phrase that.
What's the bottom of the list?
Great. Uh, pedestrian access to site, oh, the multi-use trail that keeps being talked about um. Obviously, that's outside the subdivision, but I think that that's something that's been talked about as long as I've been on the commission, probably longer, it would be nice, maybe that goes in the right hand column. Where we start having a commission conversation or a city conversation about that. In a more proactive way. And that could potentially be part of a said, you said.
Uh, that's correct.
And the water look could also be part of a said.
That's correct.
And those are already covered in the conditions that the staff put forward.
That is correct.
Right. Do we need to go through the proposals from do we need to go through and see if we agree to that changes?
Yes, I I I think that would be a a worthwhile, I just we want to go and and confirm that we hit the bottom of the list of challenges.
Thank you.
Um, you know, the the final one was the the gateway overlays.
Oh, yeah.
Although I feel like we addressed that with possible condition number three, um, that future developments are obviously subject to gateway overlays.
And then that should be in the very right hand column that we start, that's something that I think was on your short term plan anyway, wasn't it? Uh, and your your growth policy rollout, I feel like that came up in your growth policy rollout.
It is on the tree board's agenda for this Thursday at noon to begin discussion trees and the gateway over. So.
I think that was like February you announced, wasn't it?
Uh, that is correct, February seventh, I believe. So, uh, and then um before you, it was was passed out earlier, we have reviewed um several of the posed modifications to conditions um that were included in staff court as recommended by the planning board and um if I may just walk you through those books. First, excuse me, through those conditions, um, and and I will start um at the uh, the and and that's.
Let's check in with Vice uh with pressure lines first, sorry.
Is going through these um conditions still bringing hat thinking, is that what we're doing right now of creative solutions?
Yeah, and this is the the applicant came back with these amendments from the planning board with the planning board approved. Asking the commission to consider.
I I know what it is, I'm just, I'm curious if that's
Yeah.
Creative solutions.
Yeah.
That's what you are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you wanna walk us through those?
I'd be happy, yes, um, so the the first uh requested modification to a suggested condition um pertains to condition six B, uh, which stipulates that all fencing within subdivision must be designated wildlife friendly. Um, and and the app has requested uh to to revise that to state if future development includes fencing, it will be wildlife friendly in design unless the nature of the business necessitates security. Wildlife fencing, wildlife friendly fencing shall be in accordance with recommendations by Montana Fish, Wildlife and Parks. And the the app has noted that certain developments um do require scare fencing.
And we jumped ahead, right, we missed.
Um, no, they they uh the the first were some corrections.
Yeah, well, we might need to address that, so we'll back up after we do this wildlife fencing.
Okay, that that one actually is is covered a bit lower down in here, if I'm not mistaken, so the initial there on page nine.
With the sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
The sign was taken care of, and then the other is the clarification on the challenge, which was entered in the record early.
Where's the sign pop up again?
Um, it pops up in recommended condition number seven.
Okay, all right, thank you, okay, we're starting here.
Okay.
Commissioners, what do you think about that? You accept their update, or do you wanna maintain it that it's all wildlife friendly? Well, it needs to be this all footprint possible. Considering you know, that's kind of something.
I think the negotiating conditions is an assumption of of a of a decision by the commission, and I adapt to it. It it's it it's it it assumes that we've made a decision that we're accepting with.
That's fair, that's fair. So, um. Okay, so. There is one more thing, though, that I wanna address then before we before we do this. So this this whole signage part, that number seven on the staff recommendation, I think gateway design overlay would cover that. I don't know that we need that condition on there, I believe that the gateway design. I think I've said it so many times.
Gateway overlay zone?
Yes, that it would cover that, so this seems like really specific one, we'll have another process that will address that.
I have issues with that only because I think that any welcome to Livingston sign should be mostly spoken at that should be talked about in the downtown master plan and and what in recommendations from the downtown master plan to inform those kinds of decisions. Not just a random decision, but a welcome to Livingston sign somewhere.
So are commissioners comfortable with removing that condition? Pressure shorts. We have four nods in the room. Okay, five, okay, so removing condition seven from the list. And then I guess if you could add to that right hand column, make sure that um these conversations occur with the downtown master plan and any. And then we're also talking about signage, there might be overlap between that and the gateway overlay districts. So at this time, we're not gonna consider these based on what Commissioner Alliance says, said. Are commissioners comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with that too, Commissioner Shorts? Okay, all right. So we have um gone through all the hats, now we're back to red hat, and then we'll do motion. So red hat is like a gut check, so Commissioner Shorts, did you wanna go first and tell us where you're at, what you're thinking?
I'll pass.
Okay, um, pressures in the room. You wanna tell us what you're thinking before we do a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, tell us what you're thinking.
Tough area. Highway commercial. Going to uh highway commercial. This is terminology, the problem.
Anything you'd add?
Yeah, so it's, wow. I don't know if you can change the terminology of that. Just that one line in there.
Yeah, we can't.
Yeah, and what is, what does that mean as far as? Twenty two commercial ones.
Should move on to the next commissioner?
Pardon?
Should we move on to the next commissioner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lyons or Vice Chair Kill?
Um, gut check. Uh, I'm legitimately devastated um considering what the open market will do with with those twenty two lots um oriented to highway inter interchange. I think that we on the commission are charged with considering what's before us. Um, and not a counterfactual. And what's before us to me is undeniably untenable. And I think we could condition it until the sun comes up and it will still be undeniably um untenable to me. Um, and the thing that persists throughout a city's tenure on earth is its its land use pattern, the the way that land is dissected. The reason that we have the charming neighborhoods that we do is because of the way literally that that land was cut up and put onto the market. Um, that dictated a land use pattern that in an entirely brand new commodity still persists, or come on, uh, economy still persists today and is still desirable today. There's no economy I can predict in the future where this land use pattern will be desirable. And that's what we're deciding on is is upon that pattern. And to me it's it's legitimately heart wrenching to think about what the market's gonna do with that pattern where it is. And based upon our assessments of the primary criteria, based upon my interpretation of the of the subdivision regulations, there's no justifiable way to allow for the creation of that pattern. And it and it absolutely breaks my heart to think about um what that decision, a decision to to allow that to happen, like to your person.
Okay, and um, I agree with what Commissioner Lyons has said, and I feel like if looking at this, moving this forward as Tori or as Commissioner Lyons has stated, you know, we're setting precedent to be like, sure, we have regulations, but we don't make you uphold them. We didn't choose this one, the the way in which this developer decided to develop their land, they made that choice. We don't necessarily have to say, well, okay, you decided to develop your land in the beginning in one way. And now you wanna develop it, continue to develop it even in it, and it's against our land use patterns and the way in which we wanna develop. I don't think we have to say yes to that.
Let me ask a simplified question, uh, this is twenty two commercial ones, they own. Is this man that they own?
The applicant wants it.
Cause I'm 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 trying to see about the language, twenty two commercial.
It might be commercial, they might not, we don't know. When the commission rezoned it in twenty eighteen, they made the decision to allow all the uses that highway commercial allows, so that commission.
And and let me just continue, and I would say that, you know, the developer had the opportunity to make this a little more palatable for us and to cut this up in a way that would be more palatable by saying, we'll put, we'll reserve these areas for commercial, we'll reserve these areas for residential, we'll reserve these areas for light industrial and industrial. And they haven't done that. So we're gonna wind up, potentially, this area will wind up as a hodgepodge of whoever gets there first and whoever buys the first lot and it's this is heartbreaking.
Someone, someone, you're thinking of uh this of the highway watch. You're thinking of housing, does housing ever fit into this?
It could, I mean, they could, they could put housing in any one of these, but someone has to buy it and decide that they, that's what they want to do. But someone could buy this lot and say they want a hotel, and somebody could buy this lot and say they want a gas station. And then somebody could put a very high industrial business here and then or someone could buy this and put housing here, and then someone else could come and put a very high industrial. Company right next to it. And we don't have any way to stop that.
Yeah, that's what I.
Because there's no covenants in place to do do any of that. I just gut checked for me, I like, we can't mitigate this away. We can't. That's my gut check.
I. Think it's inherently challenging to work in a consensus. You know, a consensus based way of making decisions. Um, recognizing that the last subdivision we went through, I was in the minority of not wanting to. Let through a subdivision that didn't meet our standards and other commissioners were okay with it. Um, that was heart wrenching for me. I look at this and I think about the story of this land. Um, and what the community's been told over the years. I believe when the commission in twenty eighteen, it was right before I came on. I believe when it was pitched to the commission to change it to highway commercial, that they were told that it would be for housing. And I believe that's why. That commission changed the zone. But the reality is that commission might not have been looking at all the impacts that we're talking about today. Um, I guess I'd ask the question, Mr. Gager, do you know if staff has had that conversation with the applicant about deed restricting the land? So it matches what they're pitching to us in these meetings. Do you know if that's happened?
Uh, we have not had conversations about deed restricting specific uses of lots if the applicant did this time.
It seems to me that that's something that I've seen in the paper or. Seen potentially even in the application process or watching the planning board meeting is that it was implied that the development would go a certain way. And so I'm wondering if the conversation, if there is room in the conversation for that. I see Commissioner Lyons hand go up.
Um, I just, and I I know we're not, we're not supposed to talk about it, but the the reference to. To housing. Um, was was a year ago and they've been really careful uh, this time about. About not making any um. Uh, assertions of what's gonna be there. The only, the only assertions that they've that they've made have been um. From the the trip generation.
To be clear, the reference to housing I was making was in twenty eighteen. And that's how they got the commission to agree to change it from light industrial to highway commercial, because highway commercial allows housing and light industrial doesn't. Like when I go back and look at the records and read the newspaper article, it sounds like that's what the commission was told and that's. When the property was all owned by the same person and it's not all owned by the same person anymore. Um, so. Is there room in the conversation for that since it seems that the story keeps changing over time? From the developer?
Uh, yeah, I you know, I I think there certainly is an opportunity. It's my understanding that there is a a member of the ownership group who's is present this evening. Um, and so if that is a a conversation that that you folks would like to engage in it. I do think it's possible.
I guess I would offer, or I would say, um, in terms of uh. Gut check, do you need a plugin for your computer? I lack confidence based on on what we've been told in the past. And what the city's been told in the past since this was first developed. I lack confidence. And I feel like a real obligation to. Try to apply conditions that will protect what can be protected, like a wildlife corridor is not something that they offered. And if we do not convert from that, it will not happen. We know that there's wildlife that live there and I feel like for me, it's an obligation to try to make it as good as it can be for the landscape and the animals that. Depend on it. And if we don't take the opportunity to condition it, we'll lose the opportunity to protect. Parts of our ecosystem that are critical to making this community what it is. Um, so. You know, I don't, I don't have a lot of confidence in doing nothing and seeing what they come up with without conditions. Commissioner Lyons?
Uh, again, I feel like the conversation keeps. Including this assumption of. Of the outcome. Um, and again. Accepting with conditions is not the only possible outcome and uh, the the best. Outcome for the natural environment would be if we were not chopped up and developed. And that the out the outcome. The the decision there is a denial. So that that is, that is part of our authority. And and an option on the table. And so I I just see this um. Seeming like paradigm or assumption that that it's via condition, conditions are the are the route. To good planning and a good outcome and I and I don't agree with that.
I think that there's a spectrum and there's many possible outcomes, like you're describing. A best case scenario, and I think there's many worst case scenarios that we're not talking about that would remove the option for conditions at all.
Yeah, but that's not the the application in front of us, that worst case scenario that you're thinking about. And that and and considering a counterfactual, a hypothetical situation. As as the reason to. Accept something that is out of, out of step with our assessment of what the needs of our community are. To me is is a very poor decision making process.
I mean, I think the flip side of the coin is that you're also imagining hypotheticals.
No, I'm I'm imagining, I'm imagining the 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 application in front of us. And I and I think that that most, that many of us agree that. When we consider the primary criteria set out by state statute. And when we consider the subdivision regulations and when we consider the growth policy, what what the application in front of us does not. Not satisfy those requirements. And so I, and so thinking about uh. Well, if it, if if this doesn't happen and we don't get our hands on. On conditions now. There's a, there's a potential future. That's that's different or harder is a is a um. Is a, it's a flawed decision making process and it and it and it. It makes it, it make, it sells out our community today because we're afraid of of something tomorrow. And I'm not comfortable selling out our community today because of fear of of a hypothetical from tomorrow. Cause we know exactly what will happen if we did, if we, if if we. If we accept with conditions, we know exactly what's gonna happen. We know the exact land use pattern that's gonna exist here. Well, it is, it is, it is literally right in front of us. That we know and that we can make a decision on. We can't make a decision on on a hypothetical. We can only make a decision on 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 what is being presented to us. And it, and I, and I. Am not willing to be. Intimidated into um, making a decision that is selling out our community. Because uh, we're afraid of that.
I am. With all due respect, I think it's pretty strong language to imply that any one of us. At the commissioner's table, we do anything to sell out our community. And that any decision is a willingness to sell out our community. I think that's a pro, a pretty strong assertion to make about any of us.
That's how, that's how I would feel about voting in affirmative for it.
I hear what you're saying and I'm saying I think that that's pretty strong language to use to fellow commissioners.
I'm only speaking for myself and that's exactly how I would feel.
And I'm only speaking for myself. And so. It's eleven o'clock. I would like to offer that we just take a quick five minute break and then we come back to finish this up. Because we're well past our one and a half hour mark that I promised Commissioner Friedman. So can I get a motion for a five minute break, please?
I'm like a motion for a five minute break.
Yeah.
Submission by Kale and a second by Friedman. All in favor, say aye, aye. So we will see you in five minutes. Sorry for the delay, Commissioner Friedman. One thing I'm noticing. Is this staff report does not have any proposed motions written out for us. But I think. The options are clear. I guess it says right here on page sixty seven. But it doesn't have motion right now. The recommendation is to conditionally approve the Mountain View subdivision with conditions. But there's no motion right now. So commissioners on your toes. We'll have to. State the motion and then we'll check to make sure that it works process wise. So now I will entertain a motion from the commission. Are you guys ready first? Wait, there's one question I want to ask first. Sorry. There was a question we asked about deed restricting, deed restricting properties. And seeing if. The team is open to deed restricting properties.
Um, so the, I did have a a brief conversation with the applicants and um, you know, I I don't think that they. Uh, they specifically took that option off the table of deed restricting, but I I did hear a. Um, a a thought from the applicant team that um. Because of the volume of conditions that have been discussed, they may have the desire to to see the conditions written out. Um, and and reduced to writing formally presented to them. Um, be because there, I I think their thought is there may be some of these conditions that may be um, more onerous than than um, would make this development feasible. Um, and so they have respectfully requested that that uh. If if the move is to condition the approval that that they have the opportunity to see those in writing and we continue this to the next meeting. Um, of course, the decision is is the prerogative of the commission. And so um, you you are able to to decide on this tonight if you so desire um, and and. Or we do also have the opportunity to um, continue this and and if if there is consensus on on conditions amongst the condition.
Thank you. Any questions about that from anybody? Are we ready commissioners for motion? Commissioner Schwartz, are you with us still?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Does anyone want to offer a motion?
Sharon Noots.
Yep.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we deny the subdivision applications.
You have to make a motion on the affirmative, I believe.
Yes, we typically do motions in the affirmative. I was gonna ask that for process. I don't remember if that's in our commissioner handbook, do.
I think denying an application is an affirmative.
Do you have a, do you have input on process because we have two commissioners that are. Um, not in alignment and I could use your help.
Um, you know, I I absolutely are, uh, the Lindsay municipal code does not specifically um, touch upon this issue and so. I I think that the opinion and correct me if I'm wrong here, you know, the city attorney asked. Um, and and we have discussed this with with the insurance company and others that the um, legislative prerogative. Uh, in the state of Montana and throughout the United States is is broad and so. Um, you know, I I would offer that that a motion of the commission is is a a valid motion. Um, once it is put on the floor, uh, even if it is perceived to not be.
Commissioner Schwartz, are you all right with the motion as it stands then?
Sure.
I, and I just want to acknowledge that it's not our typical practice. So we have a motion to deny the subdivision by Commissioner Lyons.
Um, oh, just one, one more point of order, I'm sorry.
Yep.
But it it is in our. But it is in our commissioner's handbook, but um, I guess that's irrelevant, you know, and how to conduct the meeting. And how to make motions.
Uh, that is a great question. I'm gonna look it up right now.
I mean, those are the rules, we, you know, that we adopted or were adopted, I'm not necessarily us.
I'm looking. For the handbook right now online.
So I think deny would be affirmative and not approved would be be not affirmative.
If you'll give me just one moment, Commissioner Lyons, I'm looking through the handbook per. The comment of Commissioner Schwartz.
I mean, I I really don't care about, you know, it's a matter of process. You know.
Are you looking through it as well, Mr. Gager?
I'm looking through the Lindsay.
I'm looking at the commissioner's handbook. So. I see.
Mission meetings, maybe.
I see a section on motions. It does not indicate that they need to be the in the affirmative, but I will say. Commissioner Schwartz, since I've been on the commission with you for the last five years, that is typically our standard. Is to. Have positives in the. Motion.
Well, yeah, if, you know, as long as we're doing things legal, I don't care, you know.
We'll just give Mr.
It really doesn't matter to me.
So you're fine with the motion to deny.
I am and and I defer to the.
Okay. Alright, so we have a. Motion by Lyons.
I'll second it.
Second by Kale. Alright, so. If you're say you for it, then it means you want to deny the subdivision. If you say you're against it. It means you don't want to deny the subdivision.
Did you hear that? Okay, mom?
Yeah.
Cause it's all different.
So if you say four, it means thumbs down. So it's the opposite of what we normally do.
Right.
Okay. Um, we already did a public comment. So we're ready for a vote?
That's correct.
Roll call, please.
Sharon Noots.
Against.
Vice Chair Kale.
Four.
Commissioner Friedman.
He said four.
Uh, Commissioner Schwartz.
Against.
Commissioner Lyons, for.
The Mountain View subdivision preliminary plot is denied. Next on the agenda, we have. City manager comments.
Thank you, Chair Noots, given the late hour. I will keep my comments brief. I appreciate the time of the commission, the community and the applicants.
Commissioner Lyons.
Uh, I appreciate the time of the applicants, the community. And my fellow commissioners. This was a tough one and a passionate one. Um, and if I have. I haven't felt so frustrated in a mission meeting before, so I apologize if I've. And and so being frustrated and you felt commissioners as well. Um, and and to me, this was just a decision. Of a magnitude of impact that. Of a magnitude of impact that. Uh, in, in my evaluation hasn't been before us in my, my tenure on the commission and. Yeah, uh. I, I, I can't, I can't think of a more important decision. To make, uh, in, in the way that I evaluate the future of our city, and so I have brought, um. To me, in a, a commensurate level of emotion with the process and I've tried to, um. Be. As, um. Legal as possible, and I'm sorry if there were any moments where I wasn't.
Commissioner Schwartz.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Friedman.
Put us in a box. We're back, we were before, we were talking about this originally and, uh. The big objection at that time, you know, we're trying to protect the downtown, which was on everybody's mind. Um, we don't have any control to do that. I was looking at it as. They got two. Great businesses there and there's a, to my idea. A great need for housing would be a nice. Compliment to it. But I haven't seen any way we'd get the language to go that way. So it puts us in a box and, uh, not, not very comfortable. How are you?
Pastor Kale. I think my commissioner, my fellow commissioners for the discussion and the thoughts and. This evening, um. It's a very, I mean, this is, this is a really hard one. I. This is a hard decision to make, one way or the other, um. But I. I always try to make. The best decision that I can. For our community members, and I feel like I did that this evening, so. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. I wanna thank the commission for upholding the process that we agreed upon quite some time ago and sticking through it tonight. So that we could have a real conversation that was meaningful. Um, I still think there's some things on that list that are things we need to address regardless of the vote on the subdivision tonight. I wanna thank, um, Mr. Gager for giving us one of the best packets that we've seen with the subdivision since I've been a commissioner. Um, the supplemental materials and the letters and. The feedback was. Meaningful and helpful. As we, at least for me, as I went through the packet. Also, I wanna thank you for, um, holding space. For us to engage directly with staff. To get questions answered by people who are experts in their field, and I wanna thank the staff too also for making time out of their busy schedules to meet with commissioners. Also. There's something much bigger happening in Livingston right now than the subdivision conversation. Um, some of us in the city have been dealing with pretty, um. Unfortunate. Comments and remarks about other people. In our community, so I just want to read part of this proclamation that we. Had in our agenda packet in May. And I would ask the city to please put this into the minutes for the. Public to be reminded of where the city stands. This is a proclamation of the city commission declaring acceptance and openness among all our citizens. Whereas it's a policy of the city of Livingston to prevent harassment. And discrimination based upon race, race, color, sex, gender identity, expression, sexual orientation. Religion, national origin. Disability or housing status. And whereas the city of Livingston seeks to continue to become more equitable, welcoming and connected community. And is dedicated protecting all residents from hate crimes. And seeks to end bigotry in all forms, I'm gonna read the whole thing, cause the impacts to our most vulnerable community members need to be restated clearly. Whereas the FBI has defined a hate crime as a criminal offense against a person or property motivated in, or in part by an offender's bias against a race. Religion, disability. Sexual orientation, ethnicity, gender and/or a gender identity. And whereas data from the FBI reports in two thousand nineteen. Fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-eight law enforcement agencies participated in the hate crime statistic program. Of these agencies, two thousand one hundred seventy-two reported seven thousand three hundred fourteen hate crime incidents involving. Eight thousand five hundred fifty-nine offenses. One thousand three hundred ninety-five offenses were based on sexual orientation bias reports indicate. Sixty-two point two percent were classified as anti-gay. Male bias. Twenty-four point five percent were prompted by anti-lesbian, gay, bisexual or transgender bias. Ten point two percent were classified as anti-lesbian bias. One point nine percent were classified as anti-bisexual bias. One point two percent were the result of anti-heterosexual bias. Whereas the Human Rights Campaign reported that two thousand twenty-one was the deadliest year on record for trans and non, and gender non-conforming people across the nation. And whereas the City Commission of the City of Livingston. Which is to publicly support. And stand in solidarity with all members of our community by condemning hate activity. Opposing hateful and hurtful actions. And supporting the LGBTQ plus community for the purpose of establishing a city. That is safe, welcoming and embraces all members. Now therefore, the city of living, the Livingston City Commission pledges to stand firmly with our community members and support the efforts of our allies by condemning hate crimes. Challenging bigotry and discrimination. Supporting marginalized people. And advocating for policies and legislation. That honor everyone's basic human rights. So that all are valued and accepted in our community. Be it further resolved, I am a listener to chair of the city commission. Do hereby encourage other municipal leaders across our state nation to join us to strengthen our fight against all forms of discrimination and tolerance and hateful activity. I just wanted to be clear where the city commission and the city stands on these issues. As we've been challenged. This week particularly and recently. To continue to stand by this proclamation and who we support in our community. Happy to have the newspaper have a copy of this if it's useful for your records. I'd like a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Freeman.
Second.
Second by Lyons, all in favor, say aye.
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 This meeting of Livingston City Commission is adjourned at eleven twenty-four PM. Alright, good night, everybody.